Thank you, Bob.
You still your little place yet?
I will call the meeting to order. Anybody recording? Wonder if... Let me see what I can find out. I don't have any minutes for January 13th. And I'm wondering... I think item B is... I don't see him here yet, so we'll move on to C, which is approval not required plan for map 20 lots 1018, 1027, 1034, 1028, 29, 30, 35, Over Jordan Road, TJP Realty, care of GAF Engineering. What's more the plans?
Evening, gentlemen. Brian Grady with GAF Engineering here for Mr. Parento. Looking to create two A and R lots down on Over Jordan Road off of Great Neck Road. For Mr. Parento and his son looking to construct two dwellings at this location. This is... Over Jordan Road is a 30-foot private road. If you've been there, it's 14, 16 feet mix of gravel and sections of pavement. We do have the appropriate frontage and requisite area. We exceed the area. And there are some structures out there which are currently have permits pending to raise them. And we should be getting those shortly. We've gone through, received historic commission approval because they are... I think one of the homes was over 75 years old, so we have received historic approval and we're just waiting for final approval from the building department on the demolition permit. And we have an application we'll be filing shortly with conservation for that demolition.
So you're creating 135E and C? Is that...
135A and B are going to be the new lots to be built on. C is the remaining land of 14 and a half acres. And you'll see in that little overview plan just below that, you can see an outline of the remaining acreage, 14 and a half acres.
Turned around on the locus.
No, it's turned...
Right. Brian, looking at the minutes, all those lots that are listed there, 118, 27, 34, 28, 29, 30, and 35, all merging into three, 1035A, B, and C?
Correct. Except for lot 1030 is going to remain on its own. That is to the upper right in a butts Shell Lane. It's only 4,800 square feet. That's going to remain as a separate unbuiltable parcel because that may be sold to the abutting landowner. That's not it. Oh!
See that? The contours are exactly the same.
You said 10... the one that's remaining is in the upper right? Is that what I...
Yes.
Okay.
This small parcel here, 1030...
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry.
It's 4,800 square feet. We're leaving it as an unbuiltable parcel, as I said, because there's some consideration to sell it to an abutter.
Curious about the shape of lot 1035A. Was there a reason for that?
Not that it... 1035A?
B.
No, this one. What's this? Or add B, actually. With that long leg running.
Oh, the larger lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, but they don't need all that.
No particular reason for the shape. Just kind of kept 1035A down to a minimum size and give the remaining area out towards the Shell Lane to the other lot. So no particular...
Reason.
Reason for the shape. We're looking to... There's an access and utility easement that'll run along the lower portion. So they can just have one driveway and bring a couple water services and electric down rather than try to have a string or several locations for those.
Does that access and utility easement exist now? Are you creating that?
No, that would be created through this.
No, two lots.
Oh, yeah, they're creating this one. No? So this is the... There's one lot existing? So we're being asked to endorse the A and R plan to creating two lots, A and B, out of what was the footprint of B?
No, out of what was the footprint of those number of lots that were listed. I can show you the assessor's map. I have it highlighted, which shows the entire parcel. So this in yellow is the entire piece.
Yeah.
And these two lots basically sit right here on Shell Point Bay. So this, you can see, is the remaining land. See, there's the thing over here, and then Over Jordan Road. So these two lots are generally in this area. So it's kind of reconfiguring these...
These two.
Two, and then this would be the third remaining.
Sorry.
We're asking for approval for the creation of 1035A, 1035B, and then, of course, there'll be the remaining land of 14 and a half acres. Right now, they're made up of a lot of small, different, non-conforming lots. So we're just reconfiguring them.
Do you know the road?
I'm not familiar with that road.
Charlie, are you familiar with the road? I haven't... First time I see this.
I'm somewhat familiar with it.
I'm familiar with it.
Number of years ago, prior to 2010.
I go down it every Fourth of July to watch the fireworks.
It was a very bumpy road, full of potholes and everything else, a number of years ago. We did an upgrade in 2010 that added some reclaimed material. I've not been down there recent years to find out what it's like today. It's an unpaved road, essentially. But I can't attest to the condition of it today.
The access is adequate?
Yes, the access. I would consider it adequate. It's fairly typical of a private road in Wareham. It's typical of the private road in front of my house. I mean, it's, you know, it's hard-packed sand and gravel and stone, and it gets potholes now and then, and I've seen people... I don't know who did it, but they go fill them.
They just did it... No, not too long ago. They were in there... I'm down there all the time, across the street. And they were in there maintaining that road again the other day, filling the potholes with good, practical, decent purpose matter. But yes, in good shape. In good shape.
Any other questions?
What is the tie line?
That's just a mathematical line, so you can get from one point to the other. Because along the shore, you can't put bearings along, you know, the shoreline. So it's just to give a mathematical connection between the two points.
Questions? And the motion to endorse? So, Daniel, when you ask me, is there access?
Or if it's adequate for vehicles, for emergency vehicles, it's adequate. That's all I'm asking. And Michael seems to agree.
I want to know... I don't understand what the rules are about width. It's a pretty narrow road. It's... I'm trying to get a picture of it right now. It shows a 30-foot wide private way. I don't know if the whole 30 feet is treated in any way yet.
No, it's 14 to 16 feet or more. In some spots, it's gravel. Some intermittent sections are actually paved, but the pavement's old. But a few intermittent sections are paved. But yeah, it's a typical gravel-mixed-paved road, and it does need to be maintained. And I know they've gone to conservation. There's about half a dozen homes beyond this point that are there, and been there for quite a while. And they have gone to conservation a number of times about improving the causeway, where it has salt marsh on both sides.
So, Brian, I wouldn't call it a two-lane road.
No, no. I've been down there a number of times, and if you run into someone, you'll see there's a number of bump outs where you just pull over and let them go.
I'm trying to answer Emmanuel's question. But he's right. There's a whole community down all the way at the end of it. So motion's been made by... That's the entrance to it.
As long as a vehicle can get on... Did you say... Is he asking for a look?
They used to use their fuel pack in the seminary. They used to have... They used to use it. Remember that story?
Sorry, Bob.
Anyway, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed? Stained? Seven?
Seven, yeah.
Sorry? Next item of business is approval not required plan for... A and R Plan for map three lots, G36, G39, G42 through G54, and 1028, Richard Zine, care of GAF Engineering.
Thank you. For the record, Brian Grady, GAF Engineering here for the applicant, Richard Zine, and homeowner Jane Allen. What we're looking to do here is divide or reconfigure these six lots into two. The existing home with an address of 3 East Avenue. Fronts... East Avenue is a private road of varying width. And you'll see that there's an existing driveway where that access is directly off of Onset Ave. The assessor's office has 3 East Ave as being built approximately 1780 originally, with an addition coming at a later point, which is undetermined. So the lot we're creating would be accessed off of Charlie Avenue, which is an accepted public way in that subdivision. This is across from that first green on Bay Point if you're heading down Onset Ave. So it's a fully constructed subdivision road. We would access off of that. There is a... We are requesting some relief from the zoning circle in order to maintain the setback to an existing shed for the existing home. We are not fully able to fit that 150-foot circle. We're about 10 feet shy of doing that in order to keep the zoning setback for the existing shed. But the lot has well in excess of the 150 feet of frontage. It has 32,700 square feet of land area. The minimum is 30,000. There are no wetlands on the lot. There are no abutting wetlands. The site will be served by municipal sewer and water.
I'm not familiar with the area. I don't know where it is, but I haven't driven down there. But Arthur Street and East Avenue, are they there now?
Arthur's unconstructed. East Avenue, there's basically a driveway to access the locus property.
Off of Onset Ave?
Off of Onset Ave, correct. So 3 East Ave has a driveway with direct access to Onset Ave.
And the driveway you're referring to is what I'm seeing as Arthur Street?
Arthur Street's unconstructed. I don't know what you're looking at.
May I show you?
Sure.
So I'm looking for a road that comes here and here.
Right. This is our house here. So here it's called... Yeah, here it's called Waverly Lane, which is... But this is the access. And it goes around behind this house, which has a driveway here as well. So Arthur's unconstructed subdivision road, but we are here with direct access to Onset.
It looks like a driveway.
I'm just looking at the assessor's map, and they show it connecting.
Well, those are the layout lines and not the pavement lines. So those lot lines exist for the subdivision, so the assessor's map would reflect it. But Arthur Street is not constructed, so as your photograph shows, it's all vegetated.
East Avenue is an existing way?
It's an existing private way, correct.
What is that... What appears to be a driveway on it?
Well, that's the driveway for the access to 3 East Avenue.
I want to know the history of how that bumped out like that. That's all.
There's your bump out. The lots in question start here and go all the way around and then...
I see. These were all created, aside from this. This 1028 was existing prior to these lots being done. That's how that ended up.
So where's the frontage for 128A at?
Well, that's the existing home, which is East Avenue.
Where does that come out of Onset Ave?
I'm sorry, what?
East Ave comes out on Onset Ave?
Yes, that driveway goes directly out to Onset Ave, correct.
Questions?
I don't have a problem with what they're trying to do, but I am having difficulty seeing how we will... How we can satisfy the requirement for the A and R endorsement. So are you saying that the frontage for lot 28A is East Avenue?
Correct.
Or Onset Avenue?
It's East Avenue, has an address of 3 East Avenue.
Okay, and is that paved? What's the condition of it?
Well, we're showing the edge of pavement, and we delineate that on the plan. It's...
Does the road actually travel any further than the house?
No, it stops here for the driveway. This is pavement for the driveway. This actually access behind a house on this side. So the house that sits here has a driveway in the front, but this goes around behind it as well. That's why that pavement goes over the line.
When you're going to the centerline at East Ave?
Doesn't have frontage.
You're referring to that little bump out?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. There was a plan 62 by Walter Rowley that created that bump out.
You know what the history of that was, Brian, from the files you've got?
I don't. I imagine you could see where that house goes a little bit past the street line, probably to remedy that.
The assessor's map that Richard showed me, it had a lot 1028 as a lot number, which would have been assigned by the assessors. But everything else around it had those G numbers.
Right.
So it meant that it was a lot that was separate by itself quite some time ago?
Right. Well, the assessor's has the house as 1780, so it predated any of the subdivisions, correct.
The lot, as it was shown on the assessor's map, shows it projecting out into East Avenue. But the only question I had was, when was East Avenue established? And is it legitimate to call that frontage now? Or whether it should go out and, as it did, have the frontage on Charlie Avenue?
Well, East Avenue would have come from that 62 subdivision or the 61 subdivision referenced on our plan references.
I think it might benefit the planning board if it had a little bit of information to go along with it that would suggest how that happened, so that we can make a decision on it. Right now, it's sort of up in the air. I don't see any issue with 1028B. Clearly, you've got frontage there. But there is a question on another one that perhaps with a little bit of history presentation to the board as to how that happened would clarify any questions the board has.
Yeah, here's the 62... Well, 61 subdivision. It was recorded at the registry in 62. Walter Rowley stamped by Robert Brayman. And you can see that 1028 piece with the bump out and then all the subdivision lots around it, which created East Avenue, Arthur, Adams, and Charlie Avenue. So this is the 61 subdivision. This large box here is 1028 that Charlie's referring to. That's where the existing home sits. You can see the bump out into East Avenue and then all the subdivision lots around it.
it.
But this, the home that's here now is effectively using, is your 1028 now in reality, isn't it? I mean, the, the pool.
Correct.
Is, is over in here?
It takes, it takes over the whole corner.
Yeah, it takes some of these and we are reconfiguring that and keeping the structure and the pool and everything on 28A. All that's going to remain on 28A.
So I mean, what I'm getting at is this 28A right now isn't effectively, is already there and it's in place and it's going to stay that way?
Or is 28A being created with this?
You're just merging four lots here.
Right, everything you see here in yellow, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 lots are being reconfigured to the 2, as shown there. So this 1028 box, if you follow this, we come over and make a square here. I guess you'll have the reverse plan in front of you. We do show.
You know what the zoning is here?
Um, there's no, the doors in the sheds.
The houses in the streets. It's.
We're still in the square.
Yeah, nothing changes.
Oh, here we go.
So the house is in the street, right? Part of the house is in the street?
Yes, but again, it goes back originally to said.
You get more than that. I mean, there's plenty of frontage here.
So these dash lines.
It's only 132 feet.
Yeah.
So it doesn't, for the purpose of frontage.
The only difficulty I think you're sharing with me is how do we define, this is no problem, the whole concept, no problem. I have no problem with the concept, but to, to, to be accurate with regard to the definition of what a way should be to, to, to account for an A and R endorsement.
This lot, this lot was never part of the subdivision.
So, so this is existing today and you can drive on this?
They have access rights in here.
Well, you drive on the driveway.
No, but what happens?
On that, it's not approved, but it gets to our house.
But it, does it give you frontage?
It already extends into this lot.
Yes, this avenue is away showing this 61 subdivision.
But, but doesn't, doesn't.
It doesn't give you, it doesn't give you a useful road past his driveway, correct?
No, but it gets you to the home.
Does he have to go to ZBA?
See, that's the problem I'm having is the.
We can approve it?
Yeah.
Now, is there any lots beyond that? And, well, how's this further down?
Um, this is unconstructed, this is unconstructed. The only constructed part kind of makes this loop, so this is all constructed and none of this back there.
So this home has already got a compliance from.
Wait, can I go by these four lots here and build two plus?
And they're making this change, can we go back and hammer it?
No, because it's, you're not doing anything to affect it.
Yeah, exactly.
No, this, this road is, exists.
Charlie? He's got these statements on here which covers it.
I haven't researched any of that, but this road is physically, you can see it's.
By doing this, if, if they now had any rights in East Avenue, this guy here will have a problem maybe.
That need to be confirmed?
It's 132 feet, so.
It's a civil matter.
The frontage required is 150 on a way, right?
Yes.
Oh, really?
Yeah, 47 feet there.
But, but, but you said, but you said that it's not improved beyond that, that it's not accessible?
It, the house has been there since 1780. They've been accessing it since 1780, so it's clearly accessible.
It, it's hard to help without having all of the information, Emmanuel. The lot was there prior to the development of this area, as Brian has suggested. The question, the only question I have is what rights exist for Lot 1028 over East Avenue? If East Avenue was not a part of the subdivision or if somehow conveyed, rights were not conveyed for them to use that, what access rights do they have, which would be affected by this because it's been cut off directly from Charlie Avenue by Lot 1028B? So if, if they have rights to access that by using East Avenue, I don't see this as an issue, but I don't have the answer to that.
Can we get that?
Well, the deed states this parcel is conveyed together with a right of way over the streets and ways as shown on said plan, which is the subdivision plan, which preceded that. Right of way over the streets and ways as shown on said plan with a right of way in common with others to enter upon the beach for bathing and boating. So the deed refers to the right of way regarding the subdivision plan, which, which I just showed you.
Could I see the plan? Brian, please.
So what's outlined in yellow is the lots were reconfigured.
If you're not feeling.
Charlie? Any mistakes by the fellow?
Yeah, yeah.
What's that?
That's not, you know, that's not a big deal. That's where I believe in bending, I mean, in making.
My question's answered.
But this, this goes against everything we, we were taught.
Does Adam Street exist? I think it does, doesn't it?
Um.
At least back to Charlie.
Yeah, it exists beyond here. This whole loop is constructed and this road is constructed.
This one is not.
Right.
Before this even takes place.
The house isn't.
Clearly, from this plan, the only frontage that she had was East Avenue. She had no frontage out here. So they went all around that lot. I have no problems, Emmanuel. Do I wish to endorse?
Second. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question was made by Emmanuel and certainly by. And, and really, we're all present here. Board's present except for my friend.
Look winded.
We're glad you could make it, John.
The next item is establish surety for Patterson Brook Road subdivision of Coastal Cultivars.
Let me see what we have on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm supposed to be your secretary tonight, right? I failed by nothing there. Try to.
I was going to duck your face. Get something for us?
Yeah, I didn't know if Ken had given you anything. He just said to come in. I provided him with a couple estimates for construction, the high and the low, and see if we can establish an amount and then we'll take care of that. I've got JRD Incorporated out of Assonet has provided an estimate of 232,700. And Smith &amp; Sons from Pembroke has provided an estimate of 60,000, but they have a couple of exclusions, so once you add the exclusions back, they're, they're up about 100. So it's a bit of a discrepancy, but Ben Smith has worked with Smith &amp; Sons from Pembroke in the past, so it's a serious estimate. So those are the two prices that we have and I've provided to Ken.
You had a chance to review any of this, Charlie?
Haven't seen it. I know there's been discussion between Ken and Cultivars and I thought that the security document was to be passed by town council, but I'm not, not sure.
I've just been speaking with Ken. He said come in, we'll establish the amount and then we'll provide.
Can you give an overview of what that cost includes?
Well, the JR, uh, sorry, yeah, the JRD is fairly comprehensive. Site work, drainage, water, electric service, gas line, asphalt, paving. The, the Smith &amp; Sons one had some exclusions for pavement and exclusions for trench work and utility work, so put back 20 for pavement, 20 for utility work and we're up to 100. So I don't know where the discrepancy comes from, but I could let you look at those, Charlie, real quick.
All right, thank you. $545 a ton? That seems awful high. I don't see either one of these estimates actually doing the grading of the drainage Those two small drainage areas that are on either side of the cul-de-sac?
Uh, it's not written in the JRD under drainage. It doesn't talk about grading.
Well, it talks about furnishing and installing twipe, four-inch diameter, precast catch basin hood frame and grate, crushed stone pipe, structure bedding, install filter cloth, crushed stone riprap. Nothing about excavation or preparation or loam and seed of the areas or anything. In this one, it's just drains, including outlet structure, two drainage manholes draining into two proposed infiltration basins with two-foot by two-foot stone filled trench. But again, nothing with respect to the actual construction of that drainage, which is essential. There's so much disparity in the price, I'm a little bit concerned about trying to make any kind of a recommendation at this point.
Right, well, I, I.
John included.
I, I think we're going to be approaching the higher estimate. It's 150 feet, so, you know, we're, we're already over $1,000 a foot.
That price for mix, I freeze, is installed price?
Well, I don't know. It says, "Due to the rising cost of liquid asphalt, such prices are not guaranteed and the base price for liquid asphalt for this quote is $545 per ton." We're not talking about pavement here, we're talking about liquid asphalt, so I'm, I hesitate to say anything about these two prices right now. I think, I think that ought to be checked out. Make sure that the descriptions include the actual construction of those drainage areas. Couple of other things you need to add too is the bounding for the end of the cul-de-sac. But I'm, I just am not comfortable just saying that this price or that price is the best one to go with, especially we don't know what form it's going to take. Is it a performance bond or is it a cash bond? What are they doing?
It'll be a performance bond, yeah. I can, I can get back in touch with JRD and have him update it and make sure that it, you know, it does reference our subdivision plans in the estimate, so the inference is obviously that.
Perhaps they could, on their, on their estimate, just include the square footage of the asphalt paving that they're doing, so we'd have some measure of how far to go. Then you can apply the per-ton cost estimate to see if it matches up, but they haven't provided that, so it's a little hard to just take those numbers and say, yeah, they're fine.
Okay, I can ask them to update that.
Be helpful. Then I can write a note to Ken, copy the board with an updated review.
Okay, so when I get this, I'll, I can forward that to you.
Yeah, just forward it direct to me with that information, yeah.
Is this holding you up or holding them up or?
Uh, well, we hope to get site plan approval in a couple of weeks. Obviously, they need to get going.
I did the review for the site plan for the ZBA, and in my last review, I did make mention of the fact that they need a lot release. That's the purpose behind this security, because the frontage for their project is based on that new cul-de-sac being built. So that before they can get a building permit, they need the lot released. And the only way you can get the lot released is to either construct cul-de-sac and all the pertinence that go with it in advance, or post a security, which they're attempting to do. There's no problem with doing that, it's just that we need to verify it a little bit better, that's all.
Well, could we vote pending or approve pending the clarification of the estimate?
What are you going to vote on? You haven't seen the document that secures it. I assume Ken has seen it and maybe has passed it on to town council, but your board needs to approve that document.
How fast can you turn, can you get it to Charlie?
Well, I'll talk to these folks about a revised amount and then, you know, if you just want to authorize Charlie to work with Ken. And then, you know, if you just want to authorize Charlie to work with Ken for approval, or we can certainly be back to you, however you wish to proceed.
I'd recommend you just put it on the agenda for the next time, so you'll have everything. You'll have the document to look at, you'll have the estimate, my recommendation. You can put it to bed then. I don't think they'd be asking for a building permit in two weeks, would they?
No.
Third, 14, 17th? No, second Monday, 7, and then February 10th?
I got the 10th.
Okay, let me do what I can about getting those. We'll be back. All right, thank you.
Next item is a continued public hearing for special permit to cluster subdivision, map 105, lots C1, C2, C3, and 1,000 A-0, Charlotte Furnace Road. Sarah John Realty.
Yeah, I've got the plan.
Do you have this?
Let me look. This one, I don't have it. I don't think so. Why don't you keep it?
Basically, the checklist, right? Two options. Concepts. I did talk to Ken earlier, he did not have any conditions mapped out. His feeling was, there are some things required, some documents required of the special permit that need to be approved by council, but other than that, excuse me, standard conditions would pretty much apply.
Yeah, no, I'm basically, we were here two weeks ago. Plans still are, the plans as you see before you. I brought in the Article 8, if, I don't know if you guys have it handy, but I'd just like to go through Article 8, which is basically the alternative residential site development requirements. The purpose is to encourage the preservation of valuable open space and promote the more efficient use of land in harmony with its natural features, to promote in the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town. I will remind the board that this special permit, we're extending the water line almost 1,500 feet past the end of this project. In addition, four hydrants, which puts us a lot closer to, a hydrant closer to bayside agricultural, and as well as another commercial building on the right-hand side of Charlotte Furnace. Both of those do not have town water or hydrants. So that's the purpose of a cluster, and what you see here is we can do 10 lots, six A&R lots, and four with a road. What you have in front of you is we're utilizing Charlotte Furnace Road and doing 10 lots on Charlotte Furnace, so we're basically eliminating almost 800,000 feet of roadway to do this. So then I go down to findings of the board under Section 815. The planning board may grant a special permit under this section, only if it finds the applicant's demonstrated the following. The cluster plan will be in harmony with the general purpose of this bylaw. Which were in harmony with the general purposes of bylaw, sections all previously, sections. Skipping over that, it says that the, that will not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. I don't see how this project will have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. Will be designed with due consideration for health and safety. As I said, we're extending almost 1,500 feet of water main that currently does not exist, so I think that covers the health and safety for these residents. Superior to conventional plan in preserving open space. We're preserving 8.66 acres under this. If we do a conventional plan, there is zero open space. So we're preserving 8.6 acres of open space. Minimizing environmental disruption. By eliminating the need for a roadway, we're minimizing environmental disruption. We're creating 8.6 acres of open space, natural, unaltered, open space in accordance with the bylaw. Allowing for more efficient provisions of services. Once again, we're utilizing an existing road, so we have services in that road. That's efficiency. Creating a road and providing more services, more pavement, more impervious area, cutting down more trees, does not meet that criteria. And then the plan must meet the specific requirements of Sections 816 through 818 of this bylaw. 816 is minimal dimensional requirements, we meet all those requirements. 817, required open land. 30% has to be suitable for passive, active recreational use. 50%, it's entirely all upland, all suitable land. So the open land may be used for recreational purposes. Non-structural facilities necessary for the convenience and enjoyment of the residents. That's a condition of the approval. That's what it's going to maintain us, be maintained as. And then the ownership and management of common open space, again, that'll be a condition, it'll be put into a corporation of some sort, and it'll be meet one of those four criteria that's required under the bylaw. So we're not asking for, I'm not asking for any special provisions here, I'm just asking to meet the bylaw, and basically, that's where we're at.
For the record, Mike Bianco's here, 7 o'clock. I'm putting that on intentionally, just for Sonja's notice.
I wasn't going to say something if you didn't.
Questions, comments from the board?
At the last meeting, we had a discussion about the concept of cluster zoning, site planning. And I asked if you would consider a different, an alternative to this, which is essentially 10 lots on Charlotte Furnace Road with 10 driveways. And I thought, I was hoping that we would see something. But as I said then, it's difficult to use oral presentations to describe visual intent, so I'd like to show you what I mean by concepts. But specifically, I think this is a safe, this layout, this proposal does pose some safety hazard. 10 driveways will be coming out onto Charlotte Furnace Road. Yes, there is a turnaround at each house, so that the owner or whoever, there are a couple of cars there, can drive out and face, drive out facing forward onto Charlotte Furnace Road. But if you have a party with six cars, some cars will have to back out onto the road. I drove that a couple of times. If I weren't looking for the site, I'd be going 50 miles an hour, 40 to 50 miles an hour on the road. It's not a road onto which cars should be backing out. That I know is debatable. I would just like to show you though, and for my colleagues on the board, what the standards we would like for applicants to consider.
This plan is not totally consistent with the cluster zone. It works, but-
Did that be here, Mike?
Okay, this is more in keeping those two alternatives. More teaching with clusters on, and to cut people forward, whether they want to consider it or not. But this is what the discussion was about last week, or last meeting.
The other point I would make, I've been on that side of the table as you many years, the plan that I suggest as a concept, and there are many such alternatives, I think would make more valuable properties. Rather than just, you know, having your house on a busy street where cars are running at 40, 50 miles an hour. So I offer that for your consideration, to you, sir, and to the board.
What was your, as of right, numbers you can imagine?
As of right numbers, what do you mean? How many lots?
Without?
You could put six lots directly on Charlotte Furnace Road under an A&R plan, and then a road to create the four additional outback. On these, that's on sheet number three. So any roadway that would be created defeats the purpose of what we would be doing here, because we're here because of, to utilize an existing road and existing services. That's what we're here to utilize. We're here to, we're not trying to put in a road. If we were going to put in a road, then we would do the conventional plan. So we already have existing pavement that is purely adequate with services to feed the project. We talked about the six A&R lots, that's six driveways. We've discussed conditioning this project to meet the intent of this board, which is a 50-foot buffer along the front of these, along Charlotte Furnace Road, so it does not look like across the street. These lots are 250, 265 feet deep, so that 50-foot buffer. Also, five curb cuts, we're looking to share driveways. So under this proposal, you're one less than we could currently, than we are by right going to be able to do. You're also getting almost 1,500 linear feet of water line, four hydrants, and preserving 6.6, I mean 8.6 acres of open space. If you have to put a road in, it defeats the purpose of doing this cluster subdivision.
Why?
The cost manual.
I looked in the zoning bylaw that we use as our guide, and I don't see that anywhere where cost becomes a determinant factor on the part of the board. True, it's one part, the developer is concerned about it, I understand that. But our obligation here is to also endeavor to develop attractive developments that are more consistent with the concept of cluster zoning. I offer those two alternatives for you to consider. In my judgment, they are more in keeping, they're more marketable, and they're just better site designs. But there are many such alternatives that one could look at. If we have a gun to our head to approve this, because it meets the zoning bylaw quantitatively, I understand that. But the board isn't necessarily required to evaluate designs as a matter of cost. Or what, yes, we should be considerate of costs, but that is not the main determinant factor on our part.
The, when you look at the purpose of the residential cluster, it's to eliminate roadways, lesser roadways, lesser lot size, so that you protect the natural features. By putting in roads and more impervious surfaces, that, if you put the minimum amount of roadway in under a cluster subdivision, that's why you have lot frontage, smaller lot frontages, lot smaller, lot sizes. And if you can utilize existing roads, there's nothing in this bylaw that says you need to create roads to do a cluster. I think you utilize the existing services, it says right in the, in the purpose. It's to promote the more efficient use of land in harmony with its natural features. Putting in roadways is not, putting in roadways around town is not what we're looking to do. We're preserving 50-foot along Charlotte Furnace Road, we're preserving 8.6 acres in the rear of the property. You're going to get five car cuts with the stipulation that you put a condition on there, that they have shared driveways along the property line on these 10 lots. So you're basically making conditions for these property owners, whereas if you do not, you got 60,000 square foot lots out on Charlotte Furnace Road, where they can clear right up to Charlotte Furnace Road, they can, six driveway entrances onto Charlotte Furnace Road. There's no requirement for the developer to extend the water line 1,500 feet. So you're basically, you got six houses on well water, unfortunately, because the cost of doing something like this is built in to that 1,500 feet. Once you put a road in, Eversource charges almost $30,000 to $35,000 just to talk to them. Okay, so one roadway cut. On two roadway cuts, I think we had over here, so on this one, with the two roads, that's $70,000 that you're handing a check over to Eversource. As you said, if you've been on the side, and you've done development, you know, they don't even want to talk to you. So that's that. The Wyam Fire District is going to charge $28,000, times two, so that's 60,000. So that's just fees. That's just writing checks to town, to Eversource and to the water department. That's not doing the work. Then you've got to actually put the electric service in. Then you actually have to put the water main in. So yeah, cost does come when you're looking at whether to build a road or not. You know what I mean? That's really-
I understand.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yep.
Given the choice between the concept that a manual is sharing with us, and the concept that, where you use all the land, the original concept, which one is more appealing to you as a developer?
If, I wouldn't go with Concept One, I would go with, I would go with my, this is Concept One and the conventional plan. You're probably talking about 200 feet of roadway, maybe, so-
Go with the conventional?
You're going to go with the conventional plan, yeah. I mean, what do you, why would you go with this open space plan? If you put an extra 200, I was talking about marketability. If you put an extra, if you put an extra 200 feet of roadway in, you have 10 60,000 square foot lots, instead of 10 30,000 square foot lots, with stipulations and restrictions under the special permit, you know? And then, under a conventional, you would put in that same hammerhead, if you will, a little bit longer, and you have six approval not required lots out on the main road, and then you build those four lots with the roadway.
I think it's really the target buyer, who you're trying to attract. If these homes are trying to- If your home, if you're trying to attract a young family raising children, then an isolated neighborhood is more appealing. Having 10 homes in a row does not promote that neighborhood to you. So I don't know what the developer is looking to accomplish. Who is the target buyer for this, do you know?
Probably, it'd be, I think ranches and Colonials, so it'd be a mix, you know? That's what you would be targeting. I mean, it is tough, it's, you know, the housing market here in Wyam is not, as you know, it's very finicky, you know? So, I mean, you got the, are they going to go out and play in Charlotte Furnace Road? Well, remember, you've got Westfield across the street, so you've got the ball fields across the street. You have the soccer fields that we're working on right now. You have the two softball fields, the girls' softball fields, right across the street from these homes. So, cross over Charlotte Furnace Road. You know, do I agree living on a cul-de-sac is nice? Yeah, I mean, it definitely is. But the maintenance of the cul-de-sac, the maintenance of the impervious surfaces, the drainage, those all become issues. Those all become issues, so, I mean, are you depriving these 10 individuals of, you know, having a good lifestyle for their children? I don't think so. I mean, they can play in their backyard, they have eight acres of pure, you know, woods behind the house. If they want to go across the street, you know, they have plenty of, plenty of ball fields across the street, too. So it's actually nice, so, you know, I mean- So it's actually nice, so, you know, I mean, I know we all look at the kid driving the bicycle around the cul-de-sac, but, you know. Yeah, that's true, too. I didn't go there, but as long as they have internet and everything in each one of these houses, then I think that's probably the more important thing for any teenage or young children.
So I think, I can only say for me personally, I mean, this design is more appealing to me, I don't disagree with that at all. But I think there's a, there's a key fact in our definition of a cluster development, and in this case here, I think John is right.
Can you hear this, Mike? He's.
I think that John is correct in that what's being proposed meets the definition of the law, of the guideline. It's not, there's not an exception to the subdivision that's being proposed here. Is there some preservation of road, cost considerations, all those things are just byproducts of meeting the requirement. You know, I will say this, though. Emanuel is correct in that what, the way that we should be thinking on this board here is the development of the community. What are we looking to promote here? If we're talking about promoting ten drives coming out into forty mile an hour traffic, fifty mile an hour traffic, then there's a safety consideration in that design, for sure. I'll say that there's that same type of circumstance over on the West Wehham side, if you go down Hathaway Road. I mean, it's just driveway after driveway pulling out there, and I don't know if the traffic's any slower than that on there. So if we continue to promote that type of build-out, then I'm not sure we're doing our greatest work here on the planning board. I think there's mechanisms within town government that will advise differently. I don't know, I'm stumbling on my words here. I'm thinking if, if we're doing our job according to the bylaws and saying, is the developer, is the designer meeting the bylaw, the answer's yes. So what is the exception that we're making here? The exception that I think we need to consider is, how do we build out the community? What type of audience are we trying to attract here? I don't think that necessarily, some of these homes may be bought by residents that live in this community, and others are going to be people that we're trying to attract from outside to come live into the community. It's our mission as a planning board is what I'm trying to fumble through here, John, and what our decision. I guess my point-blank question is, if we oppose the design for the minimum roadway, ten drives, whatever the number of drives that are coming out, is the developer going to abandon the plan?
You would see an A and R plan with six lots, probably, at first.
Okay.
And then, and then from there, they would have to decide what they want to do.
Okay.
So if I can comment, Emanuel, I love your concept. I mean, it's very community-based, and I appreciate it very much. However, I look at it from the developer's point of view, and it's a lose-lose, from the point of view that he was trying to do the cluster zoning to eliminate the cost of the utilities in the roadway, and we put that back in, and his lot sizes have dropped probably in half. From a developer's perspective, he's losing on both aspects, cost and lot size and what he's trying to sell. I look at it from the point of view of, do I want ten sixty thousand square feet lots that knock down all the trees on this property? Or do I want ten thirty thousand square feet lots that preserve half of it in perpetuity? Did I say that right? So that's where I'm at, and I'm going to go with saving the land.
I just want to comment on one thing you said. For the last fifty years, I've worn the developer's hat, and I wouldn't do this plan.
Wouldn't do which plan?
As proposed. You're not, the, by the way, I'm not pushing those, they're just two concepts, and there are so many other ways to do it. Right, understood.
And I think you bring.
Any, in my judgment, with my partners, we would do something like the two plans that I showed you. There is, there has to be a commitment to aesthetics and to developing, as Mark Thank you said, a community aspect to what we're doing. So I just want to offer a contrary point to you that, as a developer, I would have done a concept similar to what I submitted, but that's not why we're here now. Just to correct your statement from my point of view.
Sure. That's all I have.
The lots that are created on the other side of the power lines, you know, this side of this parcel, you know what those sizes are?
Sixty thousand.
And there's what, two of them?
Three.
Are you a member of the council?
John, what's the story on the buffer for the solar panels? Not your concern, right?
Well, in this proposal, you got probably, just to the, with that open space between the solar panels, you got three hundred, three and change, I believe, three hundred and fifty feet from the rear property line, out to the, from the rear property line of these lots, to the rear property line of the entire piece. So I don't know what, I don't know what they left, actually, I just came across a map.
So let's go back in time. What was the overlay to the deed, twenty years, fifteen years? You know, we're talking about developing land, whatever. Now it seems like we're at the point of whatever the market will bear. You know, six months ago, they were looking at subdividing it for commercial property, or something that brings some tax revenue. And all of a sudden, now the emphasis is on houses. Sucks.
Well, I think the neighborhood would have been a lot happier with residential neighbors.
Well, initially, it was going to be houses across the street, but the developer belly up to the town, and they're all the lots, right along Charlotte Furnace.
Right, yeah, the town owns all the land across the street, all the woods across the street.
Who knows, the way politics happen in this town, the selectmen might sell it off for houses again. It's possible, you know, got to generate some revenue. That's a scary thought, yeah.
Is the developer local?
Yeah.
Oh, you are?
Yeah. Some golf balls in the backyard over to the solar panels.
That's good.
I meant local in the form of crazy, by the way.
This is a public hearing, if you would like to address.
Thank you. The green light means it's on. I'm Bob Brady for the record. I'm interested, only because I own residential land in town, that I know Wehham's zoning allows cluster development. So I'm interested to hear the feedback, first and foremost. And I'm fortunate that the land area would, excuse me, offer some added open space as well. I'm troubled a little bit, just to hear the flavor, that while, as I understand, the zoning bylaws as they exist, that we're proposing that, yet we need to do more. So I'm not sure why we have cluster development allowed in our zoning if instead we're going to propose that we need to do more. If it's allowed by the cluster zoning, which is a bylaw in this community, voted at town meeting, approved by the state, then we should probably stay with the law. While I recognize, just briefly, being here tonight, now becoming familiar with what's being proposed, developing more roads, I don't see as a good thing in the town of Wehham, anywhere, because we are pretty low in elevation, and we have a lot of wetlands between bodies of water, cranberry bogs, and the ocean. So proposing more roadways, I don't think is necessarily a good concept. The subdivision across the street developed back in the seventies, all exist, hundred some odd, two hundred maybe, homes, whatever it is, on ten thousand square foot lots. That was allowed back then. And when the term developer went belly up, he maximized his investment and moved on. The market didn't sustain him developing any more homes. They're all on slabs because of quote-unquote elevation, water table, all of those things. Now to propose building more roads, together with the drainage. Go ahead, sorry.
Can't say they were built on slabs because of elevation and groundwater. It's all cover sander on the bottom.
Well, I didn't say you didn't have good drainage.
It was cost.
You couldn't get, well, you couldn't get a full basement either.
They were cost, they were put on slabs for cost. You know, get the facts right, don't make it look like the builder was a bad guy. The builders, all they look like is.
The developer did two subdivisions in the town of Wehham, and I can tell you, because I owned a couple of them in the other subdivision, that the water table would not have allowed a full basement.
It's cremicy.
Wouldn't have allowed a full basement.
The ones that are cremicy, not in West Wehham.
I'm not going to nickel and dime. So if it's caught, well, but let's go back to the cluster, the allowance of cluster development. As I'm learning, that this one seems to, as proposed, protect a certain amount of open space. That, I think, is always a bonus. Just briefly, having seen what Emanuel proposed, I'm not sure what the size of those lots are, how they conform to what might be allowed under cluster, because they're not identified. They just showed a number of what looked like roadways. Yet, I heard earlier tonight, because I was here before this hearing, that surprisingly, you approved an A and R on roads that I don't even think meet the subdivision approval that be at Charlie Ave and Arthur's Ave. But you approved an A and R, it seemed as though nobody had even gone by the site, neither of them are paved, neither of them meet the approved subdivision conditions that went with those roads, and now there's going to be, with your approval, a new house lot that meets effectively no standard, other than a representation that, and so now.
Charlie is paved.
What's that?
Charlie is paved.
So the whole way of that new proposed lot?
I think this public hearing is, we're getting off track.
Well, okay, in the sense of developing roads, which is my great concern, I would hate to think that while I thought I had land that met conditions for cluster development, that now instead it may be proposed that I've got to develop roads. Well, that would change the whole thing, and of course, ten tax bills in the town of Wehham, together with extended water main, otherwise every one of those would all need both wells and septic systems, which is not necessarily the best healthy, safe way to go when you look at the big picture, that be at Betterman's. So I would encourage, maybe selfishly, if that's the way you look at me, that if it's something that's allowed by your own laws, then I think that if it meets the letter of the law, then you'd be hard pressed to insist that someone, anyone, any developer, come along and instead need to do something more than what's already allowed. Thank you.
Can I just offer, I'm not a very smart guy, but I'm just, I'm looking at Emanuel's drawing here, did he give you a copy of this one?
I do have the copy, I do.
So just for the sake of conversation, on road surfaces, if you look at these lots here, look at the way this is divided, one, two, three, four, five, six, those six lots can feed off of Charlotte Furnace Road with its utilities. And I would argue without measuring, that we're pretty close to the same finished surface line to feed those first six lots. And then, the main road in could feed these two here, so there's only two outliers on this plan right here. So as far as water delivery off of Charlotte Furnace, I think the distances to the actual structures themselves may be very similar to if the driveways were running directly in off of Charlotte Furnace Road. And I also think that if we were to measure the surface area of the asphalt in this design, it would come close to the individual driveways that would lead into that. So to, to the point being made on surfaces and new roads to water table, I think we have to think about the surface as well. You know, is there a, what do you think the driveway length was going to be? Three hundred feet? And feeding into the house, a hundred and eighty feet?
On these?
Yeah, on your design.
Probably a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty feet, probably?
A hundred and twenty feet?
Probably, I mean, we're proposing, well, we're offering up a fifty-foot no disturb across the front, so enough room to put the house back, so actually sixty feet, I mean, they are sixty, right?
Yeah.
So maybe eighty feet, probably, realistically, probably ninety. The house is going to be about eighty feet back, because fifty-foot no touch, and then septic, we like to put the septic in the front of the house, so.
I think in this spirit, just having an open mind about this, I'm not saying this is the best design, but I think that mathematically, both on surface area of road, as well as cost of utility, this design is not that bad. It may not be optimal, but this type of design promotes a couple different things. It solves the entrance onto Charlotte Furnace Road ten times over, but it also, it builds a more appealing, and this is my planning board voice right now, it builds a more appealing neighborhood. I think if we were to look at this question from a realtor's perspective, and say from a marketability, if we're going to build a twenty-five foot, a twenty-five hundred square foot colonial in this setting compared to your proposed setting, which has a better attraction of clientele. And again, if I'm, I think this plan also has all the preservation of land as well, the reduction of the lots. So I think if we look at this from a real estate's perspective, as well as a mathematical perspective on road surfaces, as well as a cost, there's something to be said about this plan. I'm not saying it's perfect, but I think just drawing the conclusion, does it meet the spirit of the bylaw? I think, in my mind, the answer's yes. We can't really push back on that. You've met the qualifying factors of the cluster build-out in there. From a greater perspective, from the five seats sitting up here, the six seats from a planning board, this is the type of community that we desire. And to your, back to your point, though, this is a unique piece of property because there is so much public recreational access in this area. So there's a lot of checks and balances on these designs, but even, I think the greatest of all would be this neighborhood and have all of the recreational access that's across the street. I think, I don't know that, unless you're, what's going to feed the structures, underground or above ground?
Underground.
Underground. So the runs have to be almost identical as if you came off of Charlotte Furnace Road, and just voiding the back row for a minute, the feet of those front six got to be the same as your proposal. I mean, the positioning of the house is the same.
What you're talking about is an underground service, so there's brand-new poles along Charlotte Furnace Road. So for, to tie into those, it's basically a drop and an eighty-foot run underground for a service. That's an electrician putting in, going to each house. Under the proposal of a road, you have to get EverSource involved. So to get EverSource involved, you just write a check for thirty-five thousand dollars approximately. Basically, what happens is, is you do, you give them a plan, and what they do is they do a takeoff, because now you have to, all the wire that you have, they have to put now, they have to put, not just services, they're actually putting the transformers, they're putting double four-inch, you know, four-inch conduits, they're also, it's, you know, one double, you know, one, the thick, thick, thick wire, and basically what they do is they do an estimate on.
And basically what they do is they do an estimate on what they call, they, they, basically, they do an estimate how much it's going to cost the developer to, to do the work. So if it's a hundred thousand dollars, for instance, they charge a fee based on that. And it usually comes out, like I said, in, in my history, it's about thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. So then they come back to you and say, okay, cut us a check for thirty-five grand, and then you can go do the work. And then, so now you have to go put that underground, all in the roadway. That's just electrical. Now, you've got to remember, if we do this, we're doing a full roadway subdivision. We have to, we have to meet.
All of that is opposed to just a pole drop down.
Which one?
To, to put the road. But essentially, these front six lots can all be fed off of the pole drop without constituting a new road feed in there.
You still have to put the, you still have to put the underground service in the road to get, to feed these back units. You still have.
Cost of it's less, right?
What's that?
So the cost is less.
What, to put the road, why would that be?
To feed the backwards, wouldn't it be less money?
It, it depends on which way you get it. I mean, the, the cost is putting it in the roadway, because you'd have to do a subdivision, you'd have to put a, this would be a subdivision proposal. We'd come back in front of you, under a full-blown subdivision plan. Drainage, electric, you know, electrical, drainage, the whole, you know, the whole thing. You know, we have to find drainage, you have to find, you know, catch basins, every certain fee, you know, you have to put a detention basin potentially, or infiltration, you know, you have to put, this, this, this pavement now requires you to, to put infrastructure.
Whereas long driveways don't require you to do that.
Correct.
So it's, it really does come down to cost.
It comes down to cost, yeah. If we're going to put a road in, we're going to build the conventional plan. Why wouldn't you?
I'm just, I'm looking at Emanuel's plan, and this, this could be my neighborhood over off a pond, pond. It's the exact same.
Say again, Mike.
Same thing that Makepeace built.
Correct. And, and, and to, to that point, and I was going to bring up that subdivision, I didn't realize you live there, but those houses, those lots are still for sale.
Oh, yeah.
There was, I think they just sold the last lot finally up in there.
The last house is being built now.
Yeah, they just did. And how long ago was that subdivision? So it's, it's a neighborhood, when you talk about values and, and trying to keep those values up there, it, it's, it, we're in a tough community in, in that respect. I mean, they, I know Makepeace put a lot of restrictions on what you can do in, on those houses. In other words, they, the, the types of finishes and, and the covenants there were fairly restrictive. They ensured that you were high end, you know, but I mean, think, basically, those sat for a while, and, you know, the five hundred thousand dollar range in Wareham is not flying off the shelf. I don't know if you guys realize that, but that's, we're not, this is Wareham. So, yeah, this would be perfect if you can get, you know, in the fives for, for a house. Can you? I don't comfortably think you can in Wareham.
But would you agree that our inventory is down? I mean, can you attract that type of?
You're going to go to Rochester, you're going to go to one of the developments over in Rochester, where they're paying four, four fifty for, for a colonial with a two-car garage, unfortunately. I mean, that's the, the feedback from the railtors and just being around town. You know, you, you, you've got to develop to what you can, who you can sell to. And, and I, you know, as much as we like this, it's going to add, the cost you add to that now needs to pass on. Can you actually recoup that? Can you recoup, that's, that's the challenge.
What, what's the impact, John, if you're selling houses on thirty thousand square foot lots versus sixty thousand? I mean, I'm going back to my lose-lose argument. Your costs are going up significantly once you start building the roads. You're marketed, you're not marketability, I don't like the word marketability, the, the value of the home is obviously more if it's on a sixty thousand square foot lot than it is a thirty thousand square foot lot.
No, that's not necessary, George. The, the lot sizes in my neighborhood are only quarter acre.
But my point is that a half acre lot's more valuable than a quarter acre lot.
No, no.
But seriously?
Depends on the buyer. Depends on the buyer. Some people want to make peaceful land, a lot of people these days don't want to make peaceful.
Well, I mean.
The millennials, they, the last thing they want is the yard they got cut. They want a, they want a small piece of property easily maintained.
John, can I ask your opinion on that?
What's that?
Is, is a thirty thousand, is a sixty thousand square foot lot more valuable than a thirty thousand square foot lot?
You can, in my opinion, not by much. I'd say ten thousand dollars, in my opinion. I would say it adds ten thousand dollars, say, to the, the value of that, because if you're going to buy a lot, and it's an acre and a half or a three-quarter acre lot, I think when someone would be willing, in my opinion, to pay a little bit more, you know, not, not tremendous, it's not a huge jump. I mean, I, and this is just my opinion, so, you know, I mean, because a buildable lot's a buildable lot, you know, and, and.
Good to know. I, my, my, I mean, personally, I, I thought it would be a bigger delta. For me, it would be. A bigger lot would be much more important, but that's just me, so.
It just depends on how much you enjoy yard work.
But I don't think this particular.
Right, more wonderful things.
Sometimes I know fireworks may maybe want to be too.
But this doesn't, this doesn't exempt you from, from funding the bigger lot. That, that cost still has to be carried amongst the ten units on here.
I'm not.
So the, the actual buildable parcel, that is a true statement, but each one of these parcels owns a share of the preservation land around it, regardless of what plan you're using here. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Is that correct, John?
Are you talking about the Emanuel's concept in this?
Even in Emanuel's plan, these parcels still have to fund this protected land around here.
Yes.
That cost has to be shared. We, we discussed that last meeting.
Oh, correct, yeah. It'd be a corporation where each, each property owner would have a, a share into that, correct?
Yeah, so if it's a matter of just saying I own sixty thousand square feet or a hundred thousand square feet of property, they're still going to own that as property owners. It's just going to be allocated differently in this case here.
Oh, I think, yeah, I think Richard was saying, is the sixty thousand, when you own sixty thousand square feet, that is a difference than owning a share of an open space parcel.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, you know, the open space parcel can actually hinder a little bit of someone buying the property.
Right, if you want for your poor.
Right, so sixty, so if you compare a sixty thousand conventional lot, or a thirty thousand conventional, a thirty thousand square foot lot with the open space behind you, knowing that you have a share in that open space, you know, it's, it's, I think the sixty thousand square foot lot's more valuable.
George, I think we beat this to death.
Yeah.
I would just like to emphasize that I do believe that backing out onto Charlotte Furnace Road is dangerous, and that conditions will, we, if we approve the plan, or, sorry, if the plan is approved, the conditions will be created whereby cars will back out onto Charlotte Furnace Road. That is a safety feature, which is, one of our obligations is safety, was to protect, to, to ensure safety.
Just so I'm clear, the choice is over submitted or conventional?
What you're approving tonight, what I'm asking you to approve, is the conventional, allowing us to do a cluster. The, 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 yeah, not conventional, the special permit.
I don't think we're making a choice. I think we're being asked to approve the cluster development as John has presented it. It's a yes, no.
Yes, I'm asking you to approve a special permit with conditions for the, for the cluster plan, so.
Should that be denied? You're not coming back with this, you're coming back with a conventional A and R on Charlotte Furnace Road.
Well, I mean, I, I.
Possibility?
That, I, I probably lean that way, you know? I think that's what you would lean. I mean, I don't see, if we're putting a road in, then you save the road for the, you know, the last four lots. Unfortunately, I mean.
Then the road goes around the perimeter.
The road would go up and then hammerhead. Basically, it's just an extension of option one from Emanuel's one. Basically, look exactly like that, just grown, just on a larger scale.
One road down the middle. Still six lots on Charlotte Furnace Road, four and a half.
So would you leave that road just as an easement until you got a buyer for those back lots?
Correct, yeah. You would just, you would leave that as a, as an access road.
But that doesn't, I, I mean, just from an economics perspective, doesn't those four lots then carry the cost of the entire road build out?
They, they would.
So those, those lots essentially double the cost if you do it that way?
Correct.
And those little ones, even the half the perbs, ideally sold, probably.
Practice driving golf balls.
I, I just, I just want to make sure I understand this. Does the board agree that, on the definition of the cluster development, regardless of the configuration, that this lot is conducive to a cluster development?
Yes, I.
It's met all the conditions, all the terms.
I believe, I believe the proposal on the table in front of us meets the, the, the laws, the cluster, the cluster zoning laws.
Right.
Could we take the edge off it by, in the conditions? I think we talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, having the five cuts.
Yeah, five, five common driveways.
Instead of ten?
The what?
With a shared driveway.
Do five curb cuts instead of ten, so you do a shared drive, you require each, you know?
Each layout.
And.
Each driveway layout would, would require a hammerhead so that it reduces the, the option.
Right, you can, you can, you can do that to help alleviate Emanuel's concern, which is.
I would say adjoining driveways would be better than shared.
Yeah, go on, yeah. Basically, what we typically do is you do, you know, ten, twelve feet on one property line straddle.
And then they, they can split after that fifty feet.
Mike. Can I make a motion we close the public hearing?
Make that motion.
You can make it. I make the motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Richard and seconded by Mike King. Is there any discussion? Call a favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Stayed.
Let me see here, in case.
So procedurally, George, are we at the point where we need to vote on the A and R?
No, at this particular point, you'd have to take action on the special permit, in my mind, because the success, success or failure of that will decide the A and R.
So what was the vote? What was the vote?
All we did was vote to close the public hearing.
What was it? Oh, I'm sorry.
We'd be required to make a motion for the approval of the special permit.
I'm sorry, please forgive me, I'm, I'm naive to this. What, what are we approving on the special permit? How can we approve a special permit without understanding the configuration? What am I missing here?
If you don't think that that configuration is an appropriate use of the cost of, then I would say you'd have to deny the special permit.
Well, I think, I feel that, that approval of a special permit with conditions, the five curb cuts being one of those conditions, the second condition is that the configuration cannot be changed and a road cannot be added to the property. Because I think there's a config, there, there could be a configuration change.
Just, just clarify that. If you approve the cluster subdivision, that's the way it's going to be built, the way it's submitted. There won't be additional curb cuts or roads out back, or it's what's on the plan.
Right. So if you get a high-energy buyer and says, I want that lot back there with a road leading to it, that can't be changed.
No, it's in the regulations, actually. I know schools, the, it has to, that open space has to be in a, in a, and there's been note, or it'll be in the special permit approval, in perpetuity, that that land, open space will stay natural.
They got, they got a smile on that one. In the olden days, the developer came in and says, this is going to be the recreational area, build, 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 they walk away. Kids don't play outside anymore, so there's no need of recreational areas anymore, but a lot disappeared.
I don't know, I'm encouraged, I see kids playing outside.
So, I'm sorry, help me, help me here again, though, and, and I'm with you so far on the, on the permit application, which is for a cluster development.
Correct.
As John has drawn it up, we'd have to put conditions on, because your drawing does not show abutting driveways. But then, if, assuming that that passed, what would the A and R do? What would the purpose of the A and R be?
Right now, this is one big lot. And the approval of the A and R would establish all these little lots. It's kind of redundant, I agree.
Okay, all right.
George, could I interject one more thing? That the board has to make findings under section eight fifteen of the bylaw.
Somebody say, address any conditions under section eight fifteen of the bylaw.
I got it, I got them all.
Well, this is all the things John was talking to.
Yes, right, Charlie? That's what I was giving. We need to find that the cost of plan will be in harmony with the general purpose of this bylaw and the requirements of general laws, chapter forty-eight, and the long-range plans of the town. That will not have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood, will be designed with due consideration for health and safety, and is superior to a conventional plan in preserving open space, minimizing environmental disruption, allowing for more efficient provisions of services, or allowing a greater variety in prices or types of housing. In addition, must meet with specific requirements of eight sixteen to eight eighteen, which Required open space, management of the common open space, such as that, which, that documentation has not been submitted, correct?
Charlie, was your point that this board? This board needs to make a declaration that we find his plan does conform with these qualifications in eight fifteen? We need to formally state that through, through a vote, I assume?
Yes.
But I, I would argue that we only meet some of these. I'm not sure we could argue that it is a superior design to a conventional plan. I think it's, it's a smarter design from a developer's perspective.
Sorry, I know it's a superior design in preserving open space, it says.
And is superior to a conventional plan in the preservation of open space. And then, you're correct, that is true. You're not putting any restriction on the design of the housing, right? If they want a ranch, they get a ranch, they get a colonial, so it'll go wherever the market pushes you. And I believe there's a compromise on the ten cuts down to five, on the health and safety piece. I, I think it's somewhere in the middle, I don't.
So procedurally, George, are we at the point that we need to make a finding on conformance eight fifteen, then we can vote to approve the special permit? And then we could vote to approve the A and R? If, if we got that far, is that how it would go?
That would probably simplify matters. We, let me see if I can give you another clarification here.
I want more things to vote on.
Well, I think if we conditionally put the five cuts on there, so the question really is, if he goes with the conventional plan, we got one cut on the conventional, well, you're going to end up with six cuts, and then you're going to put the road in, we're going to end up with more cuts on this.
Let me just go with the first point. So let me just go with the first point. Does it find that the, uh, cluster plan is in harmony with this bylaw? Which is, the purpose of this bylaw is to encourage the preservation of valuable open space, promote, promote the more efficient use of land in harmony with natural features, and to protect and promote health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town, which is pretty broad, but-
Okay, I'll try. I'm gonna make a motion that this board, um, vote to have a finding that this propos, this cluster zoning proposal meets all requirements of section eight fifteen of our bylaws.
Just a procedural thing, George?
Mm-hmm.
You've got five regular members, I don't think Richard can vote on this.
I can't vote, but I can make motions. I haven't voted in forever.
Okay, but you could, if, if one of the other members were not here, you could vote.
Kinda.
You just can't, you can't vote on this at this point.
Right. The motion's on the table.
I think it makes, I think it meets the spirit of it. I don't think it's our favorite design, but I, I think it meets the spirit of eight fifteen.
I don't. I don't.
I'm looking for a second, so George can call for a vote.
I'll second that. I, I have to say that, based on the conventional plan of six lots and then the potential of the road, my only reservation on this is, it, it meets, it, it meets the bylaw requirement. That, that I'm not doubting. The health and safety was the only question in my mind, and the conventional plan actually, um, increases the concern with pulling out the Charlotte Furnace Road, so I'm going to second that.
Motion was made by Richard, seconded by Mark. Discussion?
The use regulations say the planning board may, doesn't say shall.
In regards to?
Grant, granting a special permit to approve the residential cluster.
Mm-hmm.
We may, it doesn't say shall, even though the quantitative, even though the quantitative requirements are met.
The question on the table is just, are we meeting that? Is the applicant meeting the definition of the terms in eight fifteen? We're not approving, this isn't to approve the permit.
Was the intent of your motion to meet all of-
It also says may there also, that the planning board may, under eight fifteen.
But in this particular case, if we push back on this, we're gonna end up with seven curb cuts and a road, which defeats the preservation of the-
No, no, there are so many other alternatives. Come on. No. I, that I totally disagree with.
All right.
You can vote on this, that's fine, but to say that this is necessary because there's nothing else except five curb cuts is not true.
Right, but this is, this is, this is a one-stroke decision here. It meets the requirement and the developer, and we're accepting the developer's design. Otherwise, we reject this, and then the developer comes back to a conventional plan, in which case-
Not necessarily. He can come back with a cluster plan, which you have two concepts in front of you, but there are dozens available. Rejecting this doesn't push it back to sheet three, to the conventional. It's, it's just a matter of redesigning the cluster. My view. Which is, I believe the right view.
But in that case there, then we're approving a subdivision design?
You are voting on what's submitted?
No, if, if we push Mr. Churchill away right now, and he has to come back with yet another design, that then becomes a subdivision in which we're approving a subdivision design.
Not necessarily.
Come back as a subdivision.
Not necessarily, Mike. He could come back, as Emmanuel suggested, with a modified cluster development.
Or subdivision.
He could come back as a subdivision, but don't, don't get caught into thinking that this subdivision proposal, which he's shown, which is for the purpose of defining the total number of lots that he can get.
You, you wouldn't consider this a subdivision design?
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna debate this. It's, it's outside the realm of the public hearing now because the hearing's closed. All I'm saying is that, in your determination, don't let your thinking go back to simply looking at the plan that he showed you as a conventional subdivision, because it's only one of many, many options that might be available. And the purpose of that plan was only to show you that ten lots could be built on that site under a subdivision, under a standard subdivision. That's the only purpose of that plan. So his cluster plan can contain no more than ten lots. So that's the only purpose of that. So just, just keep that in your mind as you're deliberating about this cluster development, which is before you. That's the only purpose of it.
There's a motion and a second, George.
Well, we're in discussion.
I'm gonna keep reminding you.
The only, um, the only gray area that I see as far as the cluster development is the concept of cluster. We've, in a couple of times that we've used cluster development, we haven't seen the straight-line development that's proposed.
You could look at the zoning bylaw for the definition of a cluster, it's in the back of the book. And that will speak to it.
Division of land is the lots to be used as residential building sites where the lots are ranged into one or more groups, having area and yard measurements less than the minimum required in the Table of Dimensional Intensity Regulations. These clusters of groups shall be separated from adjacent property and other groups by lots of lots by intervening common land. Number of lots of the entire tract shall not exceed the number permitted under normal application. Now, that one phrase, I don't think we've- Previous subdivision, I don't, uh, cluster division did not adhere to that either. I wouldn't say the one on Great Neck adhered to that phrase.
The only getup I see with that is that plot of preservation land has to be at all times acceptable to all property owners, based on that definition, because that is the common denominator in joining all those pieces together. So if you were to divide those up to the individual property owners, and it's somehow they could restrict the other nine from using that plot of land, then I would see that to be a problem.
You can't do that under the cluster mark. They can't divide it up. It's held in common ownership. So you can't divide that and, and restrict one person against another from using it. It's all in common ownership.
But I, I would argue on the last meeting and, and how that is actually gonna be paid from a tax base. If I was paying for a portion, if I was paying for one-tenth of that plot of land, could I build an argument, "You can't come on my land," Charlie?
No, because it comes under, it would come under the ownership of the homeowners association or some other group that they form, and that group would get the tax bill. And then each of individual owner would be, um, required to come up with, uh, one-tenth of that tax bill.
Right, so that, to that point, is what I'm saying, is that one of the conditions is there has to be a homeowners association.
Well, the requirements for the cluster demand it.
Well, but that's not what we are, that's not what we discussed last ti, last meeting when this was presented to us. There was an option that each of the ten owners will pay for a portion of that land.
That's, that's not the only option, it's available to, uh, the ownership of the common space, you know?
Yeah, you don't, the idea is not to divide the open space up into ten separate pieces. It's to be held in common ownership. Whether it's a homeowners association, or the Y-Lands Trust, or it's into the Conservation Commission, however it happens, it's spelled out in your bylaw. So, however it's apportioned, if it remains taxable land, it would be taxed with one bill, with probably everybody's name on that bill, because they would become members of the homeowners association or however it's, um, set up. And then they would be responsible for paying their percentage or their share of the total bill. But it doesn't get divided up to where one guy can say, "You can't come on my ten percent."
No, I agree with that. I think that's how I would envision it.
Yeah.
At the last meeting, you had proposed that there was a, a concept that each person pays for a portion of that land. That then, in my mind, applies that, "That's my land."
Can't.
Right.
I'm sorry, the-
I just had a question for you on your motion, Richard.
Yes.
Was it your intent to the motion to state this project was in harmony of all the findings in eight fifteen?
Yes.
But that's, but may I just, please? The, the definition on page one, or, um, on, in the, in the, um, back of the book, um, "These clusters or groups shall be separated from adjacent property and other groups of lots by intervening common land." These pro, these lots are not separated from Charlotte Furnace Road by intervening common land. We're not meeting eight fifteen. Am I right? I mean, you gotta read it.
Yeah.
It's not happening.
I'm, I'm, can you restate that? I, I, I-
Oh, there, there is no intervening common land between these lots and Charlotte Furnace Road.
You want them to be-
Intervening common, the common land. This is what the, the concept of the cluster, it's an island within, within this common sea.
I hear what you're saying. I'm having a hard time believing that that's what the intent of that statement is. Here it says-
This, this is intervening common land. This is not.
But this isn't, this isn't common land. I mean, this, this is a road.
Right, right. These have to be separated from other lots, lot here, this is, it's a town lot, it's the road lot.
I think you're totally misinterpreting the statement, uh, Emmanuel. I do.
I, I respectfully don't, I agree with you.
That's-
That's fine. Yeah, I mean, come on. It's, read it.
From adjacent property, right?
Read, read the sentence.
"These clusters or groups shall be separated from adjacent property."
Right. What is this? An adjacent, an adjacent property.
That's a road.
It's a, it's a, it's a lot, it's some, it's a-
No, it's a road.
Or a lot-
Charlotte Furnace Road.
To the right.
Right. It's not there, it's not, it doesn't belong to the-
So, under your definition, any, any house lots in cluster zoning have to be off of the road? And there has to be a private road to get to them?
That's what that, that's what it says.
And actually, Richard, in, in my neighborhood, that's exactly how it's built out.
That's one way of doing it. I, I, maybe we need to get counsel, I, I don't interpret it that way, I think that'd be foolish.
Well, there's, right off of the road, there's, there's a fifteen-foot buffer that is technically-
Yeah, you can do it that way, you could do it, of course, it's tons of options, you could do it that way. Maybe we, I don't know. John, do you have any-
That's, that's an easement, Mike. That's, you're creating an easement on a roadway, you have to have frontage on the, on a road. You have to have frontage. By saying you need to put open space between your lot and the road, it doesn't make sense.
Well, in the spirit of what Emmanuel's saying, though, what about the right-hand side of lot ten?
Correct, condition that, so you provide a ten-foot, you know-
And then you would need the same on lot one to the left of lot one.
That's a, that's an access.
Charlie, do you have any experience in this?
I would, um, suggest that the, that the board considered the requirements there, the hearing's closed, so I really shouldn't comment on the benefit of, of this, um. I think that's all I should say right now. If you've got specific questions for me that you want me to answer from, just from keeping the, the process going, I would be happy to do that, but I don't want to interject any thoughts about personal feelings concerning the plan at this point.
The question I'm asking is, according to the laws, I mean, our bylaws and our definitions, it states the number of lots over the entire, I'm sorry, the, the cluster or group should be separated from adjacent property and other groups of lots by intervening, intervening common land.
Well, it certainly doesn't do that on the ends, if you're asking my opinion on that, because it's up against, um, power line on one side, and it's up against that right-of-way, which is a separate lot to the open space in the back on another.
It's up against Master Millwork.
Yeah, technically, those two end lots don't meet that.
The question that, the question on my mind, though, is, is the frontage on Charlotte Furnace Road.
It has less to do with frontage, I believe, on Charlotte Furnace Road than it does the idea of a cluster. A cluster talks about a group of lots, um-
Again, let me re, let me rephrase it.
Yeah.
Emmanuel's point is that, that his interpretation of this statement, that this group of clusters shall be separated from adjacent lots by common land, and his interpretation of that is on all four sides of that group, of this group of ten, all four sides shall have a common space, front, back, left, and right. And I'm, I'm asking, is front correct? I'm, I'm, I find that, I find that very hard to understand. I can understand back and sides, I can, and, and John-
The, the intent, the intent, I believe, was that all the lots would be clustered in a group that would then back up to open space. I think that was the original intent of the cluster bylaw.
I'm going, I'm gonna go back to this statement.
I know. I know, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to stay with it.
Is the question, is the road common access?
No, the question is, to Man, Manuel's, uh, has brought up an interesting point in that he's interpreted this statement to mean there has to be common space, just like there is on the back, between these lots and Charlotte Furnace Road. Would absolutely require there be only one curb cut. Am I saying it right?
No, there could be more than one.
If, if I may, I, I, the, look, if, if you look at Emmanuel's plan, his lot's front on a roadway.
No, they don't.
No, they don't.
No, they front on a roadway. You, those, that's a road that he has, that hammerhead's a road.
I think he's got a buffer.
No, the hammerhead's a road, I'm putting a road in to do those five and five clusters.
Yeah, he's got common space in front of this.
In front of?
Yes. Did you look at it? There's, there's a, there's a delineation, a common space between-
No, no, you're creating a road and then putting the lots on that road. So if you put, see what you're saying? The lot, the roads that I'm creating are gonna be on the same, you're, you're asking if you should front on a road, guys. You have to front on a road.
The created principal streets, if any, shall be offered to the town for acceptance as public ways on completion.
That's, that's, that's off-point.
If any.
But, but I see, I, I interpret this sentence as saying, is there a way to get from any one of these pieces of property to the common space in the back? And in my mind, the answer is yes. You can come out of lot five, the Charlotte Furnace Road, walk to lot ten, and there will be an easement that'll bring you to the common space in the back.
Walk up the back yard.
So you can do that as well, but can the public get to the common space?
Public don't have access to the common space, it's the people in the subdivision or that cluster that have access to the common space.
Well, anybody in the cluster, the guy at lot six can walk back his lot, or you can walk down the road and up an easement onto the side.
Walk across his neighbor's lawn or whatever, but the common space is for them.
Another way to ask this question, your, if you had a home here, would you rather have it here or here?
So what John's point was, is that if we say there has to be common space here-
It is, yeah.
Then there needs to be common space here.
Could, but not necessarily, no, because these are, these are part of the, these are elements of the sub, of the cluster plan.
This is a road, this is a road.
But it's, so is, so is all of, this is typical.
But you can't say we have to have common space for this road, but not this one.
Yes, of course you can, because this is, this is own, this is the same, this is the same-
Now we get real selective here.
Look.
You have, you have to front on a roadway, guys. You can't not have frontage on a road.
Just ask yourselves, where would you rather, as a- Just ask yourselves, where would you rather, as a planning board, where would you rather have your home? You know, in a cluster like this, or in a cluster like this? That's, that's what you have.
But I think what we desire and what the law accepts as being in compliance are two different things.
The law says may, it doesn't say shall. The law says may.
Then we just put it to a vote, and then...
Pardon?
We just need to put it to a vote, then.
Yes.
Motion has been made and seconded up for having a vote.
To your point, is that more desirable? And I think from a marketability standpoint, or a aesthetic, somebody living there is. I think from a point of view, from some of the reasons for the cluster in the first place, reducing roadway lengths and better use of existing streets and utilities, it's a trade-off. You know, would it... So procedurally, you will make your findings, and then you would have to vote yea and aye on the special permit as conditioned. Anybody have a problem with that?
I just, do you have all the special conditions?
I don't have them all. We, we could run through them tonight, but we could... I think the only thing...
No, but you left this.
Outside of our normal conditions would be the information required from the applicant. Two, there's some documentation they have to submit to town council, such as the ownership of the open space, and there's a couple other items there.
Oh, God. Who's gonna find it no matter what, won't I?
I think it wasn't an expensive one. Tearing apart that building.
Dry this out, just dry this out. It's, it's, it's really neat.
Yeah, it reads pretty good.
Knock yourself out.
No, it's not fine enough for me. I like a fine point. Got a hard enough time reading my sentence.
Would you like me to repeat the motion, George?
I had just written it down as separate findings, but you said to approve it as 815 as a whole?
That was my motion. My motion was that the board vote to state that the applicant has demonstrated all conditions as outlined in section 815 of our bylaws. Can I ask that we call for a vote, George?
Yeah, I've just looked at something before the discussion. We came out of discussion. The, okay, read the motion and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Through my voice.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, I heard three votes.
Aye. You didn't hear me. Aye.
Aye to which?
That it meets the...
No. Procedurally, does the individual things meet the same standard as a supermajority?
You need four out of five.
What was the result?
I think, two-two. I think the findings should represent some sort of explanation about the variation in the...
I'm sorry, what was, what was the result of the vote?
I think we're two-two and zero. I just wanna, I think the findings should comment on the shortcomings that we had, that the straight line and not the cluster. That's the only...
I think you have to vote on the motion as made, George. I mean, you wanna, wanted to, want people to pull it back and modify it and vote again according to what you want, but...
Motion lost.
Based on that section, on that thing, it failed, so...
So I think we're done.
No, you only voted on the findings. You only voted on the findings, and the findings lost. So you have to reconsider the findings again. You didn't vote on the special permit.
What I'm saying is, is that the findings lost.
Correct.
Right? And the permit cannot move forward without the findings passing.
That's correct. If you want to deliberate, that particular motion didn't pass. If you want to make a different motion, you could.
I would just like to add that, in the findings, that while the straight-line layout doesn't meet the letter of a cluster, I think that's, the value is exceeded by the lack of less impervious surface and less pavement, less infrastructure. Probably didn't wear that very well.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure where you're going.
I'm just clarifying for the public record on why the decision was made.
One of the gripes I always have about findings, especially when, even applicants are pretty scared of, they gloss over everything, and you don't... I think you cannot acknowledge this, the way it's presented, without a finding that you think that the overall project outweighs its shortcomings. So the shortcomings of being six A and L lots more, 10 A and L lots, I think, is, is overwhelmed by the other benefits, the open space, the less roadway, less infrastructure. Not just a blanket, yes, it agrees with everything. I think you need it.
Okay.
And if I thought about it better, I, I could enumerate the benefits.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, is there four voting members? Five, six? How many voting members are there?
There's five.
There's five? So that motion was two to two?
Yeah.
Within...
Two to zero.
That's four.
I got abstained, I wasn't here last week, so...
Oh, you abstained, so...
Two weeks ago.
Wait a minute, then.
I thought I was the one that abstained. I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, did you abstain?
I wasn't here. I don't know what you guys were talking about on this.
Hmm.
You know, you guys did this, what, two weeks ago? I was absent.
Don't we have the Mullen Rule? Or are you gonna appoint, are you gonna appoint an associate to... Associate members can vote on special permits, if you appoint them. I'm just, procedurally, and Charlie can, you know...
Still need a majority, though.
You need four out of five votes.
You just need four out of five. If Michael wasn't here, then George could appoint, Richard, to sit on the special permit, so that you would have five members.
Correct. Thank you.
But also the concern about paved area. On this plan, where there are ten driveways, the...
Could I just hold you off right there until we have another motion on the floor?
Sure.
Thanks.
Sure.
So right now, we would be looking at either appointing the associate member, or allowing, Mike missed the... earlier hearing. Watch the tape, or watch...
Quite honestly, I don't think there was anything covered in the first meeting that we didn't cover tonight.
I, I, I agree with that, Mike, strongly.
Yeah.
I think it would still require him to...
To watch the tape.
...look at the tape for himself.
Yeah.
And sign off on the, the Mullen paperwork.
And in the absence, we should appoint...
Anybody who have a problem with that?
With what, appointing Richard?
Appointing Richard.
I don't have a problem with it.
I'm sorry.
I do.
You're appointing me to be able to vote on, on what?
I'll make a motion.
Your own motion.
I got it, George.
Look at that. That's your service.
That's why I tossed him the other hand. Right there, George. I just threw another one at you.
Use his, it's a one-piece pen.
All right, so we need a motion to appoint Richard to act on, as a regular member on this special permit?
I think to make a motion to appoint Richard to act as a voting member on special permits.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So vote.
May I speak now? Oh, no, not yet.
Let me just, we'd have the motion say that this proposal meets the intent of section 815 of the zoning bylaw, and note that the benefit of the...
Cluster design?
Of the cluster as presented... Not the benefit, but the, the design as presented outweighs the...
The shortcomings of what section, George?
Do me a favor. Measure that pavement.
The benefits of the reduced roadway and infrastructure outweigh the layout of the lots. Is that close enough?
Hundred and twenty.
That's your motion.
Times 10.
I'll second.
Just the, just the lengths.
Just a point of clarification, George. Are you saying that the cluster development is superior than to a standard one? Are you trying to reach that conclusion based on that? Or, I'm not sure that I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm struggling.
Right.
And before you go too far in terms of committing anything, I would like to address the, the concern of paved areas.
Well, we, we, we're up for discussion now.
May I?
The floor is yours.
The plan as presented has approximately 1,200 lineal feet of pavement. 1,200 in the driveways. One of the concepts that is, alternatives, is about equal. So you're not talking about, I, if you could calculate for me, Charlie, the paved area of the, of the, of the circles, I could complete. But without the circles, there's 1,050 lineal feet of paving in this plan, and there's 1,200 feet of paving in this plan. So we're splitting hairs. I mean, I wouldn't make the, the, I wouldn't make pavement area an issue or a determining factor.
Well, it's overall disturbance.
Pardon?
It's the overall disturbance to the site. I used paving, I was probably wrong.
No, it's, the disturbance is the same, it's... I think if you're going to, if, if the board will approve this, it's gotta be on its merits, not on, not on quantitative comparisons. It has to be on a merit basis.
Those houses aren't set back for the road, Charlie, either?
Just looking for the...
You're not allowed back for a year, you know.
I'm, yeah, I know. I want to get out of here.
January, you bring us the most challenging decision of the year.
I'll ask again, is there any more discussion on George's motion?
I'm just looking for the verbiage that covers what I was trying to find out.
George, you're gonna have to start at 4 o'clock. We keep this up.
Who makes any difference? I can't hear you guys.
What are we doing, George? Motion's been made and seconded. I'm gonna have to insist that we call for a vote.
Wait, Charlie's calculating, there, wait.
In this one?
Yeah, in the first one.
Roughly 1,250 lineal feet. In the second one, with the two entrances, 1,125 roughly.
All the paving?
Yeah, that's...
George, this is not...
That's based on running from the edge of Charlotte Furnace Road to the center of the T, and then taking the average diameter of about 115 feet on each circle.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's about equal. That's what I came up with.
Any driveway?
Yeah, it's a driveway.
No, not including the driveways. No, why should that be included? That's not part of road construction. That shouldn't be...
No, no, oh, you're talking no construction. No, I was just talking about cleared area for driving.
So driveways, you're gonna have 10 driveways, no matter what. It's gonna be the same thing. The length of the driveways will vary from, from lot to lot.
About 50 feet.
Whether you have the plan that was before you, whether you have a concept plan or some variation of it, the driveway shouldn't enter in it at all. That's a separate thing with respect to the cluster. It's no different than having multiple designs of a house. Somebody might want a paved drive, somebody might want a stone drive. You don't consider that.
All right. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Charlie.
All in favor?
Will I get to vote on this one?
Yes.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye, no.
I know what you meant.
I knew I should have voted against you.
What was the vote?
Four, one, zero. Four, one, one, so... well, you're not here, so... All right, now, the question would come with the special permit.
So, you're waiting for a motion to approve the special permit?
I would like some sort of discussion on conditions, if that's the...
I think we decided that we were going to ask for at least two conditions. One being that of the 10 lots, we reduce five, 10 curb cuts down to five by doubling the driveways. And that common space be added to the north and south sides on the power lines side and the agricultural company. You know what I mean.
Are you proposing 12-foot or 24-foot wide driveways?
I'm open to either.
Well, you're suggesting something, what is it? Because now you've got two houses, so you can have passing traffic.
I think that's...
No, no, I'm just asking, what's the condition?
That there'll only be five curb cuts.
And how wide are the driveways?
I don't know, and I don't think that's... I don't... I'm under the impression that that's not a detail that we're going to dive into here unless you want to put a condition that they be a certain width.
I'm just asking that...
I wasn't going that level of detail.
Okay.
I mean, we're happy to.
Well, I think to Emmanuel's point, it does make a difference because a 12-foot drive is going to require traffic to stop on Charlotte Furnace Road, which would be a concern. If you double that, then you do have entering and exit traffic at the same time. So, I think it, to his point, the whole exercise here was to reduce the volume of traffic coming onto Charlotte Furnace. We need to stay at 12-foot, at which point you need to design the stuff to flare up to the individual houses at the top.
Does that work?
Yeah, whatever the condition is, 12 feet, 24 feet, I don't know, whatever you're trying to achieve.
You disagree?
No, no, I agree. You're exactly right. You're going to... if you do a single driveway, you're going to have somebody stopping on Charlotte Road while somebody comes out.
Right.
So, 24 feet.
So, five curb cuts of 12-foot width.
Might I suggest applicant to submit plan of buffers and driveway layout? Because I think it might be better with a visual.
Are you proposing that we delay approving the permit until we see that?
Well, I think we can bring that back into approval.
So, yes.
As a modification or...
So, you're saying that we...
There's other documentation he has to provide before.
Only to counsel, though, not to you.
I'm sorry?
Only to your counsel. They have to provide the condo doc or the condo docs, yeah. The documents, the open space documents need to be approved by your legal counsel. So, that's a condition of approval.
Would you be willing to show us?
Absolutely. I mean, or just make the stipulation, I'd say 24 feet. 12 feet on that's, 12 feet on one lot, 12 feet on the other. So, it's 24 feet. That's what I think, that's what Emmanuel might be getting at. And then, there's no... there's only one curb cut, the 24 feet wide. It's essentially 12 on the property line. So, you strata on the property line, 24 feet. 12 was on one property.
That's not what you wanted, is it, Emmanuel?
Not what I want, it's what are you saying?
Understood.
This is not what I want.
He's concerned that someone's going to be trying to pull out and someone trying to pull in at the same time.
Understood, so doesn't that...
So, if you go 24 feet, it gives enough room so someone can pull out and someone can... You know what I'm saying? It gives you enough room.
I was under the impression that it would be your preference that only one can go in or out at one time.
No, no, I'm saying if we're going to have two houses sharing one driveway, what is the width of that driveway? Because you're going to have two-way traffic.
Would you prefer 12 or 24?
I'd certainly prefer 12 visually, but you're going to have to have 24.
If you're concerned...
Now, you've got a 24, you've got another... you've got five more roads now coming off Charlotte.
Just a suggestion, because you're now in writing conditions and everything. If you make them 24 feet wide, as Emmanuel suggested, now you've got five potential roadways. You don't need a paved area 24 feet wide. If you're very concerned and you seem to be concerned about open space, why open it up 24 feet wide? There are multiple examples of 20-foot roadways that I've seen that operate two-way traffic with no problem whatsoever. 18 feet. You have 18 feet as a standard for up to nine house lots. So, you could have something closer than that. You don't need 24.
So, the condition then is five curb cuts for 10 double driveways 18 feet wide, is what I'm hearing.
Can we add with...
Saying you don't need 24. You make the choice as to what you want, but you don't need something as wide as that. I think that's a waste.
The second condition that I heard earlier was that there'd be buffers on the north and south ends.
Well, one thing that we talked about was a better way to isolate this from the neighbors.
Well, I thought we talked about 50-foot buffer on the front.
But I'm also thinking that if we slid the lots down, you could probably get some of the common area down this buffering, master millwork, get a better buffer there.
You can't do that, George, without making the lot smaller in the frontage. He's already taken up all of the frontages for all the lots. So, if you're going to have a buffer on each end, one on master millworks and one against the easement, which is set aside for the access to the back land, those frontages are going to have to shrink somehow.
That's what we're talking about, that you're allowed what, a minimum of 100 foot?
100 foot. We're way over, so if you want to make us 10-foot stipulation to make a buffer, then the A and R plan, when we come back, we'll have that revision. We'll have that done in the plan. If you guys want 5 feet, 10 feet, 15 feet, we have each lot as 118, 120. So, we just cut 2 feet off each lot, slide them over.
It looks like there's plenty of room.
There's plenty of room.
I think this board, just my observation over the last couple of years is, John, if you're willing to just push this to the next meeting, you understand what the spirit of all this discussion is about. If you can give us a visual, we can comment more effectively. You understand what the law is, if you can show us. If you got through the big hurdle of accepting the model. You know, the dual driveways, the easement, making, you know, build the neighborhood in some type of visual for us. That's what I think. I think we're rushing a bunch of conditions right now, and we don't have a good visual understanding of...
Well, I think we need to identify this.
Yeah, that's all we're doing, is identifying what he's going to come back with very clearly.
All right.
So, we haven't decided on how wide these buffers are going to be.
The... Yeah, well, now, you're not showing anything there.
Thirty, 35, 45, 55, 75.
Master Millwork has a built-in one.
Hundred, 120, 135, 100...
So, you know, 10 feet?
Yep, just enough, enough to meet the letter of the law. Well, just as a buffer.
Got about 160 feet extra.
Yeah, well, probably 10 feet each side. And we'll show driveway locations.
In my mind, if you're going to do...
Oh, we closed the public hearing already.
The shared driveway, you could have it wide where you enter and exit, and then you could separate them.
Absolutely. That's what we intended to do. But the public hearing is closed, so I don't know if you want me... I can't really produce any more additional information, and I shouldn't be talking. Yeah.
So, you don't get blindsided.
Is it crystal clear that this is going to have to be managed through a homeowners association? I think that's debatable.
There's choices. It can go to a nonprofit organization, it can go to the town, through one of its existing land use boards, not land use boards, but preservation boards. There's a number of options that the open space can be dealt with. That is one of the documents he has to submit to town council for approval. The management of the open space has to be submitted for approval. It's already stipulated against commercial use.
I'm sorry, back up. The management of the open space has to be committed in the special permit?
Has to be... He has to submit an agreement satisfactory to town council. Well, that says that the town is required to do maintenance work, and we don't want to see that.
We beat this pretty hard last week, and it seemed pretty obvious to me that while there are options, the only viable one is the homeowners association.
It's one of the big cents to make. It's going to be the most expeditious as far as getting it done.
But in all cases, it's not us to determine, it's the town council.
I think it's up to the applicant to select one, Mark.
For our decision-making order?
Yeah. So, he has to present evidence that he's going to have some sort of an agency that will oversee that open space. It's his choice as to which one he wants to offer to the planning board for approval. And the form of that gets approved by town council.
Have you thought about this piece? Do you have a proposal?
Yeah, I asked my attorney what he would prefer, and he said...
Give it to the town?
No. No. He said, "Just a simple homeowner's trust or corporation would be formed, and the open space pass would be deeded to it." It is not very involved, so I can submit that if you'd like. So, it's going to be homeowner's trust or a corporation. I will note, though, that the... This is, public hearing is closed, so I can't submit in two weeks. Come back with that driveway plan that you're asking for, because this public hearing is really closed right now. I can come back with the A and R plan in two weeks if this gets approved.
You could submit it as part of the A and R, right?
I can make notes on the A and R plan if you make that a condition.
It says the applicant shall provide an agreement satisfactory to town council that the town of Wareham, if the town of Wareham is required to perform any maintenance work, the owners of the residences in the development will pay the costs, and that cost shall be a lien upon the properties. Applicant shall provide as part of common open space an agreement satisfactory to town council, empowering the town of Wareham to perform maintenance of the common open space in the event of failure to comply with the above. We'll have to re-say it twice. Now, lot shall be further subdivided. Just because of occupancy. It's certified that the premises have been built in accordance with the approved plan. Board may impose other conditions, limitations on time and use. Board may grant special permit for clustering even if the proposed development is not subject to the subdivision control law.
So, that means this is allowed under A and R?
As far as the subdivision is given eight years protection. Special permits under this section shall lapse within two years, excluding the time to pursue. If substantial use has not, soon the commencement of construction has not begun. Is that free?
You don't have those situations in this. None of those things apply. You haven't got a subdivision. You've got a special permit, and it's going to be based on eventually... Yeah, but it's not a special, it's not a subdivision. You're not going to be looking for any of those stipulations to be fulfilled.
But it says the board may grant the special permit even if the proposed development is not subject to subdivision control.
That's correct.
But it's also saying there's a two-year time period for special permit.
That would be the same as any special permit, I believe. The only recommendation I'd make is that if you can agree on those two widths, one on each end for the buffer that's going to be added. If you're making it 10 feet or whatever you're making it, make it tonight. Because the only way that you can, in my view, sign that plan is to wait for the 20-day appeal period to end under the special permit. And then, you can come back as an A and R based on the fact that you've granted the special permit. If you sign it before then, you will, in effect, are granted an A and R plan without any permit approval at all.
I'm just trying to go through the conditions so he knows what to put on the plan. Now, I threw up 10 feet for the buffer, is that satisfactory on the sideline?
I'd also recommend, George, as a part of the conditions, that each conveyance shall make reference to the open space. You don't want another Beaver Path situation to where lots get sold without a conveyance to the open space, and then everyone wonders who manages it. Make sure that gets put in the special conditions.
Charlie, remind me to ask you to explain that later.
Okay.
Were there any other conditions that we discussed?
50-foot buffer off of Charlotte Furnace?
I have that. Waterline extension to the last lot should be in there.
What's the open space going to be used for?
I'm sorry, Michael, what did you say?
What is the open space going to be used for?
According to the bylaw, only... It was a couple of different things, but that's... You can put the restriction on it as it says in the bylaw.
You know, because the thing to be careful with an open space like that in that area, first thing, if, say, two of us bought homes here, we were friends, our kids got dirt bikes.
Yep.
They're going to be riding, say, that's part of our property, it's part of the open space. If there's nothing says it can't be used for something like that, then they're protected. Otherwise, they can do what they want to do.
Under 18, 818.1, in any case where such land is not conveyed to the city of town, a restriction enforceable by the city of town shall be recorded, providing that such land be kept in an open and natural state and not be built for residential use or developed for accessory uses such as parking or roadway. It's 818.1.5. That's what the town council should be looking at in the open space documents. But if they want, if you'd like to make that a condition of the approval, this gets recorded, the registry deeds as well. So, that's a perfect 818.1.5.
My feeling is that's the function of the homeowners association or the corporation. I don't know that we set those conditions. Believe me, I don't want dirt bikes in the back of anybody's house that doesn't welcome it. But I think there's now 10 property owners that can set those restrictions for themselves.
Get a lot of faith in people.
Well, let those 10 people go.
The homeowners association is created and deeded prior to, would be prior to...
A special permit is null and void unless the conveyance for each lot includes a percentage of the open space.
The only thing I don't, I'm a little skeptical of, is if it's a corporation. Is it a corporation of one person and you're the person?
As the lots get sold, each homeowner gets a percentage of it.
Of the corporation.
At the beginning, the developer owns 100% of the open space because he owns all the lots as well. He conveys out one lot. He then conveys out, along with that, a 1/10th interest, undivided interest in the open space. That's a part of the conveyance document for that one lot. Now, he owns nine tenths, and the homeowner owns 1/10th. When he owns, when he conveys the second lot, he conveys another 10th interest along with the lot. He now owns eight tenths, and the two owners, homeowners own... He now owns eight tenths, and the two homeowners own two tenths. That happens until the last lot's sold, in which case he loans nothing, and all the homeowners own 1/10th interest in the open space. Could I ask a question of Mike King, though? You mentioned something about the 50-foot buffer. Which 50-foot buffer?
We discussed a 50-foot no-touch between the edge of Charlotte Furnace and the home. So that the first 50 feet would stay natural, with the exception of the driveway.
Utilities.
But it's still a part of the lots, is what you're saying?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so you don't have lawns right up to Charlotte Furnace.
But we're mandating a, which is fine, a 50-foot, basically a landscape buffer, which is defined in our bylaws.
I don't know if I would call it a landscape buffer, just no touch.
Yeah, undisturbed buffer, except for utilities and driveway.
But there's an easement off of Charlotte Furnace of, what, 10 feet? And then it's 10 plus 50, right? Probably, yeah. Yeah, so that actually creates a 60-foot. So now that makes their 10 feet back.
No, no. It's 10 feet beyond the street line of Charlotte Furnace Road. Or 50 feet beyond the street line of Charlotte Furnace Road.
But the property line does not come right up to the curb of Charlotte Furnace Road.
No, it doesn't. But neither does the homeowner own that. The town owns that. So whatever gap is between the pavement and the edge of the layout, it may be 10 feet, might be 12 feet. That's a 50-foot layout, 24 feet, so it's probably 13 feet on each side. That's owned by the town. At the end of that point where the layout starts, then the 50 feet begins.
Right, so there's essentially 63 feet in that scenario.
So we have four buffers on the north and south ends, curb cuts, double driveways, 18 feet wide, the 50-foot buffer from the edge of the road or the end of the town line. That's what I didn't get clear.
How would you say 50-foot front buffer, say? That basically...
From the street line.
The street line, yeah, from the street line.
And then interest in, there's a term, the conveyance issue on the interest in the common space.
No, I was just making that as an explanation of how it gets handled.
No, I mean, you said you wanted a condition that...
Oh, just to make sure that in the conveyance of any lot, the conveyance for any lot will include a percentage interest of the open space within the description.
Right, those are the four.
And it should be an extension of the waterline, hydrants to Lot 1.
Say again?
That's the big one. The extension of the waterline along Charlotte Furnace Road to, at least in front of Lot 1.
I thought that was kind of a given, wasn't it?
It's not. If you guys didn't make it, it doesn't have to be done if you guys don't make that a condition.
Is that for a water department standard?
That's the water department's requesting it from you, to add that as a condition to the approval.
How are they going to feed the hydrant?
The waterline stops about 400 feet to this property, so we're going to extend it 1,500 feet down all the way in front of Westfield in all these lots. Because it's a special permit. If it was an A and R plan, we wouldn't be extending that waterline.
Okay, we've got five.
All right, I put in, added the driveway lint covenant, no work Sundays and holidays without prior permission. Dumped trees and debris disposed of off-site. Waterline extended per water department specifications.
You might want to include any conditions of municipal maintenance for curb cuts as well as repairs to Charlotte Furnace Road that may occur as part of the water main construction. Is there any gas up there, John?
There's gas, yeah, on our side.
You're going to add it?
No, it's already existing.
It's on your side all the way through there?
I believe so, yeah. It stops? Gas.
Only gas goes down that side.
Gas? It may stop.
Unless it went down to B-side, I don't remember that.
Okay. Well, DPW's letter, as you see, is not allowing opening of that road at all. They said you have to pave all the way out to 28 if you're going to cut any pavement in their letter. So there's no cutting of pavement.
Just strips, it's got to be curb to curb.
Yeah, no, all the way to 28, they want you to pave.
We had a couple of problems dipping down.
The pavements on the, I'll call it, the north side, isn't it? On the Westfield side of the road? Aren't the hydrants on the Westfield side? So the water main's on that side, too?
Correct.
It shows a water main on the plan.
That's why I asked him about the gas.
So you're going to need, either going to drive a sleeve under the road for each service, or you're going to make a cut?
Each, no, each, you can't make cuts. So it's going to be 10 bullets, or five, to each property corner, to the property corners. You'll be doing a bullet underneath the road.
I think there's a large piece of yellow plastic sticking out, so there might be gas there, I'm not sure.
Some condition we need to document, Charlie?
Sounds like pretty standard stuff.
They're going to work with both, they're going to work with both the water department in terms of whatever they require, and you're also going to work with municipal maintenance for whatever they require. I would leave it at that, so long as those items are put in there.
So you'd be on the agenda in two weeks, three weeks?
I would probably wait at least a month. No, probably a month for the A and R.
And at that time, we would approve the special permit?
This hearing's closed. The special permit hearing's closed. The special permit hearing is closed. You closed the public hearing for the special permit already.
You've set the findings, you've set the conditions. What you need to do is get Ken to write up the document that has that, so you can sign it at the next meeting. Then that would start the 20-day appeal period as soon as it gets filed with the town clerk.
On a special permit?
Correct. After that, after the 20-day appeal period is through, then John could come back with the A and R plan, and you could sign it as an A and R plan. Make sure that it refers to the special permit on the A and R.
You're looking at it, Charlie, I think, right there?
I believe it does. With the revised plan, just make sure that that gets put in there.
Okay. I would draw my A and R plan.
Scrub the light down a little bit. I might have something to do. You need some wallpaper, Charlie?
Can I continue the A and R, Charlie? Can I continue the A and R? Are you active on it?
No. No, it's either a yes or a no on an A and R.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate that.
Says open land can be used for riding trails, doesn't say what you're riding.
George, could I recommend one more condition in the special permit? That a copy of the recorded homeowners association document be returned to the planning board for its file?
That's what I was trying to, I was looking for that review, so make sure it was filed. That's what, and it went a different direction, but that's what I was asking about. How do we word that so that we know the...
Copy of the recorded homeowners association shall be submitted to the planning board.
Prior to signing the special permit?
Prior to the conveyance of the first lot. Just before I forget. Make sure you take a vote on those conditions, Sonya.
I think we do that when we vote on the special permit. We'll have them typed up.
Oh, okay.
If I approve now, I approve the A and R, right?
No.
Will you let all these maps and put it back in the box? Or should I bring them? That is, I'll keep mine.
You could wait till they're typed up, so you've got something to sign if you want to do that.
Just clarity, just because we kind of jumped around a little bit. Thank you. So I guess we're all set.
You voting on the special permit next week, George, are you going to vote on it?
We're going to type up the conditions, and when you, probably when the appeal period's over, it starts after we vote.
Yeah, you got to submit your decision.
We will, yeah, we'll vote on them next meeting.
Is that the next meeting, next week? February 10th at 7 o'clock?
Six.
6 o'clock.
Six.
6 o'clock.
Okay, I'm going to have to come here for that, right?
You mind if I think?
You like seeing me, Mac wants me. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night, John.
Yeah, good night. Thank you, guys.
Good job.
I think the attempt was to try to be done a little earlier. I don't know if it's going to work out.
This is the minor modification for... What do you call it? Spring Street?
Eat mush, Nujan?
Any other business, master, Wareham master plan, possible vote?
So, if I may, Mr. Slavin had given a mark, he had marked up the original 2018 master plan and given a copy of it to Ken. I was in Ken's office, I looked at it. It's not necessarily changes that he wants. There's a lot of comments, it's all handwritten, and I'll be honest with you, a lot of the handwriting is hard to understand, and it would require a lot of explanation and discussion to move forward. I have two issues with it. And one, it's against, it's against the 2018 version, which this board has met several times on and modified quite a bit. To clarify, and I think that we've already taken care of a lot of the issues that Alan brought up. The second point is, is that it's a prime example of why we have to have a tight change control process. I think it's way to our disadvantage to have people hand us handwritten, marked-up copies of a master plan and say, "These are the 84 comments that I want to make on this," without having substantial justification for why they're making the comment, if there is a change they want to make, if there's a deletion they want to make, if there's an add they want to make. So my recommendation is, is that we approve the plan as we have all been through it. As it is now, we approve the change process that we've all been through, that we update the master plan document to include the change process in it, make it one document, so everyone, there's no excuse for not knowing what the change process is, and then move forward. And move forward by letting all of our boards, letting the state, know that we have a master plan, we have a process to change it and update it, and we can start. And with that in place, we can maintain this thing in a proper way. Very leery of postponing approving either the document itself or the change process any longer for fear that at our next meeting, I'll have someone else hand me a copy with comments and changes that they think they want to make. It has to be much more formal than that, so...
So are we going to be able to be overridden by a selectman of this master plan? Are they going to be able to step out of line in the process?
The planning board is the only agency that has approval authority of the master plan.
So the selectmen are just commenting on the plan just like any other resident?
Exactly.
What is the change process?
Change process is that we've discussed and proposed.
Is it in the document?
No, it's a separate document. Now, as I said, my suggestion is that we include it as an appendix in the document. I've presented this to this board on multiple occasions. I added a second page that basically just, I went into the master plan document and identified the format that we put in our goals and the format that we put in our strategies, so that if someone wanted to come to us and say, "I have a new goal," or "I have a new strategy that I want to be considered," they'd know the proper format to put it in.
Could I suggest that it says the chair of another board commission authority? The change proposed goes through the chair of that...
I think that's right. Keep the number of voices down to a centralized representative.
Would you, kind of be like the same process, but seeking legal advice? Any particular board entity could vote to request... Any particular board or entity could vote to request that a change be made and the Chair will present the change.
So under source of change request, um, when I say another Wareham Board Commission Authority, et cetera, you would say the Chair of such? Something along that line? I think that's fine.
Any public hearing process?
Pardon me?
Any public hearing process?
Um, if you look at... If you look down, um, under step three, when this is done, the Planning Board has the option to say, "We should have a public hearing on this."
Why shouldn't there be one on any change you make if this master plan is gonna be a guide for the town? Doesn't matter whether it's... Whether it's a small change or a minor... Major change, why shouldn't there be a public hearing on it?
I think my intent was that there would be... Count... There would be several opportunities for someone to come and suggest a very minor change that... And this board should have the discretion to say a public hearing isn't warranted. But that's where my head was. And if you want to say that any change requires a public hearing, that's up to this board. I felt that we had the intelligence to, um, distinguish when we needed one and when we didn't.
I think Charlie's right. I think it affects the citizens of the town that it should be due a public hearing of some sort.
Well, I mean, is it this ongoing process of a public hearing for every change? Or do you just accumulate major changes and present them at town meeting for public comment? Because when does this public hearing happen? It's gonna happen at one of these board meetings? We got four hours of...
Yeah.
Other stuff to chug into this thing?
There'd be a timeline attached.
Pardon me?
There'd be a timeline attached to respond to it.
We could very easily, on the change process, say, um... That it's on the agenda, obviously. There's gonna be a presentation to the Planning Board and we could have a public hearing at that time for every one.
Well, I think if there's a public hearing process, but if you make one, you know, put that... Group them together.
Okay.
We'll be calling a public hearing every month.
Well, how often are we making changes here? Annually or we just do it bi-annually? Yeah. Yeah, so I think that if you say something like bi-annual, a public hearing will be held thirty days prior to a vote on bi-annual changes.
To address and suggest a change.
Yeah. You can't... You really can't add another agenda item to these Tuesday night things. You need to add a separate meeting if you're gonna...
Tuesday night, Monday night.
It'll be Tuesday soon enough.
So where are we here? Um, you want a public hearing on every change?
Well, we could have a public hearing on every change, but at one collective meeting, rather than, to Mike's point, having it on the agenda every...
All right.
Monday night meeting.
So the... So the process will be a presentation to the Planning Board that'll include a summary of the motivation, benefits, and proposed text. A public hearing will be scheduled. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, we move on to step three where we... Which is decision time.
Now, were we committed... Charlie, we committed to a timeline for the public hearing?
I'm sorry, say again, Mike?
I'm just curious if we're committed to a timeline.
There's like two sentences in this Mass State laws that says... And I've shared them with you. The Planning Board shall have the authority to make and update as necessary a master plan.
I understand, but I think... I think the risk we run is if we don't... If we don't allow the public, who are ultimately affecting, to have a say in the changes, that we run the risk of becoming what this country is fighting right now.
I thought you were asking about a timeline on public hearings.
If we say that in your paperwork that we're gonna have... We're gonna schedule a public hearing. If someone submits a document following your guideline for a change, does that trigger a time that we have to schedule that meeting? Or can our verbiage say, "We're gonna schedule a semi-annual public meeting to address all requested changes"?
I was trying to... That's what I was trying to answer in... From the point of view that there is no guideline, there is no law, there is no rule. We can... We can do it as we please.
That was... That was what I was trying to get across.
I wouldn't... I wouldn't think that you'd want to make changes on a regular basis. If it's... If it's a master plan that's a guideline for the... How the town is to be developed. It should be something which is pretty steady over a period of time. And over a limited amount of time, you might go back and review that plan to see whether or not you have fulfilled any of the goals or strategies that you've outlined in it. And if you haven't, then you adopt new ones to adjust to whatever... For whatever reason, your goal or strategy wasn't met. Or if you've got new ones that you want to apply, then you can do it. I'm not suggesting that there should be just somebody walking through the door. "I don't like this master plan, I want to put this in there." No, it's the kind of a document that should be pretty well set up and specified so that you're not changing it every other thing. If it's... If its goals... If its goals are that clear, then there should be very little change in it until you've had a chance to measure the goals and measure the outcome of what you've said you want to do.
I couldn't agree with Charlie more on that.
I'm just... I'm just suggesting if you're gonna do it, that there needs to be some sort of a mechanism. And I don't have a particular problem with this, although I would suggest that if it's that important that a change be made, that it should be under a public hearing.
Planning Board will determine need for public hearing annually?
Say again?
Planning Board will determine the need for public hearing annually?
Or set a... Set a timeline for review of this... Of this document. I don't know if there's any review period, whether you say it's good for five years before you're gonna look at it again or whether it'll sit on the shelf for ten.
Well, does this agenda apply this order of events? When you get to number three, Planning Board options, approve or reject? Is that happening without the public hearing?
Not anymore. In my mind, it was. Someone could come in and... Someone could come forward and say, "I have a proposal for a new goal for the Wareham Master Plan, and I want that proposal..." And that proposal is, is that we, uh, work to implement a Prop Two and a Half override. And they make their case, they give us why they want to do it, they give us the wording, where they want to put it in, and then the board says, "No." I see that as something that we have the authority to do. I also see someone could come in and make a very good proposal on a new goal and new strategies and we all stand up and cheer. You say, "Yes, absolutely, let's put it in." But I don't think that's gonna happen very often to Charlie's point.
Probably not.
So, but, um... Under process, I'm gonna say that the presentation is made to the Planning Board and then the Planning Board will schedule a public hearing. And without a timeline. We can... Because I think we'd want to base our schedule of public hearings based on volume. You know, I don't want to...
Should I say, if you say the Planning Board will determine the public hearing annually, we'd make it...
I would...
Say we don't need to?
Well, the... Charlie's point was that every... Every change should go to public hearing. And I heard... I thought I heard this board go, "Yes." They wanted that. I... Personally, I would say, "No."
My point is, I don't want to see a public hearing every month for this purpose. I would say, once a year, we determine... At least once a year, we determine whether it's time to group them together and act on them.
Or at least determine whether or not the goals that have been outlined in that document are working. Maybe... Maybe it isn't so much that you... Maybe it's better that you take the time on a regular basis, where it's once every year or once every two years, to see whether or not the document is really doing what you want it to do. And allow, if you decide as a board that you need to make changes because it's not fulfilling what's happening in the town, there needs to be some adjustment, you do that. But keep it in the... In the realm of this being just a guideline. And as it's suggested in the state statute, as well as here, that any of... Any things you do with zoning bylaws and so forth reflect what's in this document. But any changes you want to make to it because you've seen things...
Not work.
Not work because the coastline has now increased in height by ten feet. That maybe you want to change your ideas about Main Street. Just using that as an example.
So, but I need...
I need to...
I need a point of clarification. If we enacted this and in our next meeting, someone came forward with a proposed change, what is our next step regarding the public hearing? I... What I'm saying is that a public hearing will be scheduled at the... At the Planning Board's discretion.
I would...
Yeah, that works.
But I would rather take... I would rather take that back, if I may, a little bit. Because I don't think you want these things to happen just willy-nilly just because somebody thinks something needs to be changed. I mean, presumably, you've done a lot of work on this, Richard, and the board has taken a look at it. And you're gonna use this document as the Bible for going forward for whatever period of time you've established.
To that point... To that point, Charlie, that's kind of where I was at in that if people coming... Are coming in every week, say, which is an exaggeration, with... With proposed changes to the master plan, if this board says, "No..."
Then I would... I guess what I would do would be to alter my approach to it and say that the more important thing is that the board looks at it from time to time on a regular basis. And knowing the things that have taken place throughout town, measure the goals and whether or not those goals have been met.
But that's a whole different issue.
I understand.
I mean...
And it may be that it's better to leave it as you have it, that depending on what changes are being reflected in the things you see, that you put it out possibly to a public hearing for a specific purpose.
I...
I... I understand that, it makes more sense.
I think you follow this down. And when you get to this point, you say, "Okay, we may not agree with it, but we think it deserves..."
So more input?
Yeah.
That's exactly what I'm trying to say. And I want more input. And I... And we could say, "I want the town administrator to come in and talk to us. I want the Director of Planning to talk to us. I want a public hearing on it." And that's be for us to decide.
My only other comment would be that at the top of this, you put a paragraph in there that talks about the purpose of changes and the update process that any board in the future will be able to look at and say, "Oh, yeah, we should be doing this on a regular basis." Or reviewing the goals, reviewing the master plan on a regular basis to see whether things have been met. And this, if we make changes, this is how it'll be done. That's my only thought.
The statement as to the purpose?
And the purpose should be related or somehow linked to the goals that you've set forth in that document. If they're not, or if they somehow need to be changed...
Basically, what you're looking for is a report.
Due to the execution of the existing plan.
Yep.
How... Something along... I get it. I get it. Any other comments? I'm gonna leave it, it is as is for public hearing then, all right?
Yep.
Would you forward us...
Pardon me?
Would you forward us a summary of his recommended changes?
Through Alan's?
Yeah.
I have... Alan sent me as a courtesy, an email. But he delivered to Ken hard copy. I'm uncomfortable... I don't know that they're the same. And I'm uncomfortable forwarding Alan's email. Ken was gonna bring Alan's copy.
There's a copy somewhere that we can look at and see what his recommendations are.
Sure. And then I think we should consider them. And I think we should ask Alan to come in and present the ones that are important. But I also ask him to compare his comments against our... The one we've been working on for five months, as opposed to the one from 2018.
Yeah, that whole sanctuary city thing, we don't want that in there.
So, any... Any other comments?
Good job, Richard.
All right, so given that, then I...
I just have one... One thing, though. Public record of this document is gonna be kept where? On the county's website? Who is the custodian of making sure that happens? Ken?
Um, that's a good question. I'll make sure it happens.
The finished document will be given to Matt, I imagine.
Yeah.
But as... So my point being is, I don't think changes should be made more than annually in the document. Because we're... Even though it's just a guiding document, we're making decisions and comments based on this document. So if it becomes such a dynamic...
It'd be bad.
Yeah. The documents, it's gonna be bad for us. We're not gonna be able to support our decision-making.
But we can control that.
Right, so I think you... You know, somewhere here, you need to identify the custodian. And to get that you're not here anymore, or I'm not here anymore, or any of us are not here, who is the custodian?
It'd be the Director of Planning.
Okay.
Which he's... Which he's already done. The 2018 version is on the town website now.
I think there's other places it has to be submitted to. I think that's in the statute. Couple of different places in the state.
There's only one. DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development in the state.
Say it's on the website, is it posted as a draft?
Actually, the 2018 version is posted as final. Well, the name of the file is that. It's Master Plan Final Version, but it's not. So did I answer your question, Charlie? The Department of Health and Community Development?
There was one. I thought there was one other, but it doesn't matter. It's whatever the statute says you...
Hold up for a second. So we made all these alterations. We've now created a 2020 version of this.
Yes.
And we're gonna post on the website saying, "This is the new master plan."
Yes.
And we need to have a public comment.
Yes.
It's the first call we get. Who are you birds to alter this master plan without public comment?
Could be.
Okay.
But that's okay.
Who endorsed the other master plan? The... Did your board endorse that plan?
So that's what we're gonna do right now.
If you endorse... Not you, you weren't here. The board endorsed the 2018 master plan?
No, we did not.
No, it was never accepted.
Okay.
So the steps I'd like to... To go through is, as I said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the current version that we've worked on. Approve... And with the, um, statement as... With the, uh, change process in as an appendix, use Charlie's point to add a statement as to the purpose and goal of changes in terms of execution and monitoring the execution of such plan. And if we do that, then I'm... Then I would like to come back, you know, in our next meeting and propose a non-binding referendum that we take to town meeting to ask the town meeting to endorse, um, the decisions that we've made.
I'll second that.
So...
Springtown meeting?
Um, I don't know if I can get it in in time. I don't know the timeline. Do you know... When does the warrant close for a Springtown meeting?
Next Tuesday.
Early February. Pardon me?
Pretty quick.
Next Tuesday. Can you do it under the special?
Okay, we got time, right? Or we can do it in the fall. But I've... There's a lot of people in town that feel that this needs to be brought to the town meeting's attention. And I... And we need to comply with that. And I've talked to Bowen about it, I talked to Claire about it, and I've talked to Charlie at length about it. And so... And this is what I've been led to believe is the best way to go forward with it. So I've already got a draft and I've talked to Rich about it and we're gonna go work on it some more. All right?
Yep, sure.
So with that said, I'd like to make a motion that this board approve the, um, Wareham Master Plan as we've edited it with the change process added as an appendix with a leading paragraph outlining the purpose of the, um, change process.
Second. Second.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Emmanuel. Discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor? So moved.
Great. Congratulations. Step one.
I wish I could say that.
Step one. Thank you, George.
You feel like you've just given birth, or what?
Pardon me?
You feel like you've just given birth?
Kinda.
He's been born again.
Next item is the articles for town meeting with a possible vote. Be submitted to public hearing. First one is the signed by law amended by, I believe.
Is this the one we went through months ago with David Regina?
No, this is the signed by law adjusted for content.
Political content.
Administration content outlined by the attorney general.
Yeah.
Where you couldn't have any biased political signs or whatever.
I don't think you could have anything, even if they were non-biased.
Any issue with that?
It's too much to read at this hour after.
I need to look at it, too.
Yeah, let's table this, please.
The, the only thing I would recommend is that you vote to move them forward for town meeting, because the warrant will close before our next meeting.
And then if we have, if we read it next week and have major heartburn, what are, what is our recourse?
Then we either withdraw it, or we motion no action be taken.
Okay, and who made, who generated these changes?
Ken has collected them, these were, the signed by law was adjusted to reflect the recommendations of the AG's office regarding content. We discussed the duplex definition.
Yeah, that we should vote on, that's simple. And it's the second page, by the way, that we're voting on. We added, we added the demising surface being a wall or ceiling, a ceiling or floor as well.
Okay. So, what's the difference between these two?
The second one, Richard, adds that the demising surface can be a floor or wall, or a ceiling, because you can have duplexes in vertical format, whereas the first page didn't. In fact, it was your question, I think, or maybe it was the Mark, I don't remember. So, our action should be on the second page, which defines the two-family dwelling as a building containing two dwelling units sharing a common demising wall or floor ceiling, constructed on a single block. That goes through for three and four and five dwelling, family dwelling. It just identifies the horizontal demising surface. Charlie, if that makes sense to you.
So, motion to recommend the changes to section 340 is represented in option two?
Yes, yes.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And can I get a motion to submit the signed by law also?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This one I have an issue with, floodplain map.
That way, too.
Is this, this is article for town meeting?
Well, once again, we've had these map changes that the planning board has to bring forward. Now, this says, on August 28, 2018, you had notified a proposed modified flood hazard determinations. I wasn't, were you?
This is addressed to Mr. Trappiano.
Yeah, he's the chair at January 22. Now, there's lists of maps and panels mentioned, but no maps have been submitted yet. So, previous two times this has been done, they said, oh, you have to do this, or it will affect your fund shares. And the towns that didn't submit to it made out better than the ones that did.
Are you serious?
I'm serious. So.
So, help me here, there's going to be an article at springtown meeting to adopt the new FEMA flood zone map?
Correct.
Something like that?
Correct.
And because of that, and the zone, and the planning board has to make a recommendation? Or, you know, whatever the word is, we have to stand up and say we talked about it and voted on it 5-0-0 or whatever?
Yeah, we're supposed to represent, bring it to town meeting.
Oh, we're supposed to bring it and sponsor it?
Oh, represent it.
So, we don't have the maps?
Exactly. The first time they did this, it was handed to me like a week before the warrant closed, kind of like this.
So, I tell you that this has to be pushed to the fall, then?
I do, too, I, is there any repercussions by doing that?
I'm just seeing it tonight, so I couldn't tell you.
I think it was kind of ridiculous of us to act on something that we have zero knowledge of.
It'd be irresponsible of us. Yeah, it'd be criminal of us. And this can affect.
Because of the modifications to the firm.
Big time, right.
What are the dates on the firm reps?
Well, let me just read this.
What was your question, Charlie?
Because of the modifications to the firm and the FIS report, your community made by this map revision, certain additional requirements must be met under section 1361 of the 1968, within six months of this letter. Prior to July 22, 2020, your community is required as a condition of continued eligibility in the flood insurance program to adopt or show evidence of adoption of floodplain management regulations that meet the standards of the NFIB regulations. These standards are minimum requirements, do not supersede any state or local requirements of a more stringent nature.
You know, my feeling on a subject like this, Mr. Chairman, is, this is beyond the expertise of the board. Who are we to make a decision on floodplain recommendations, just to joke it through a town meeting? There has to be a subject matter expert to advise us.
Well, past practice has been, when I asked for such, they said, oh, there's no time for that, and then they showed up two weeks later and did it.
Well, I think, I think we should.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think we should at least come together as a committee here, and put in a formal request to town administrator in this election to provide us a subject matter expert on this.
Plus, if you'll, my view is that there's somebody sitting in some office justifying their job and salary, and coming up with so many of these regulations. Personal experience, so I, to put the onus on us to evaluate this is absurd.
It's typically.
Who submitted that?
This is, what's listed in here is a bunch of actions. I would say they're probably exemptions that were granted. All specific numbers and.
Who submitted it to the planning board?
The Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
But I suggest that you ask the building inspector to give you an explanation of it, because he would be the one that implements this regulation when it comes to building. So, if there are any particular changes with respect to the building regulations, which is what he would be involved in that would affect the flood zone and so forth, you could probably get a good explanation as to what this really means. Now, what they do from time to time is they modify the maps, and so you'll get one section of the maps with a date that goes back 10 years, the map changes that they made, which are panels 1, 7, 9, 16, they'll have a new date, and they'll have adjusted information on there. But my suggestion would be, ask him to come forward and sit before the board and explain what this document means. He's the enforcer of the building code under which this happens.
That's a good point.
Well, what I see here is a summary of maps, map actions in the town library.
Yeah, but these things take place from time to time, so if they're sending anything that he's seen within the last six months or so that is pertinent to this, I would think that he'd be able to come in and explain this to you, so you'd have an idea as to what you're looking at. Why guess at it?
Well, I'd like to, can I make one comment? Charlie's right, and I don't want to change subject.
I'm sorry.
All right, read the first, the first two sentences of the second paragraph. Now, mind you, this letter is dated January 22, which was five days ago, and it was written to the, to Mr. Trappiano, the chair of the Board of Selectmen. And it says, FEMA did not receive any appeals of the proposed flood hazard determinations. Any comments and concerns about the firm and FIS report submitted to FEMA have been addressed and resolved. And that.
So, who did that? Who was behind those actions?
And I'm really struggling with this landing on our desk.
I agree.
The trouble is, anything to do with FEMA, unless you're not the person writing it, it's awfully hard to come correct.
I understand that.
They've got their own language, so.
But who was.
Somebody to take this in, what'd they say, 90-day appeal period?
The very first sentence, I'm sorry, George, is, August 28, Patrick was notified. Very first sentence.
Right, of 2018.
Holy crap. He wasn't chair there.
Well, as a general statement, this is the type of thing that creates a huge time suck, because we're sitting here talking about this, we don't have the expertise, I don't know why this is being presented to us, when we got more important work to do as a board, like looking at these bylaws and how we make our decisions, you know, tonight's a great example. If we don't take action on getting some clarification on these cluster developments, we just set precedence here tonight, because we don't have enough, you know, definition or guidance within our bylaws of what this is supposed to look like, which I think was all our reservations in making a decision tonight, is, look, there's only one or two cases in this town where these cluster developments are in place. Every time we say yes, it builds us for a stronger case of a, you know, a non-conforming development.
Well, the good news is, tonight, we're saying we're following the law. We would set precedent if we weren't following.
No, tonight, if you feel permit me, with very, most respectfully, tonight, the board failed in its obligation.
Understood.
We allowed, you allowed, you, the board tonight had the opportunity, for the second time in the last two months, to take action that would benefit the town, when the used car sales lot, Richard, I'm sorry to be bothering you.
You're not bothering me, Emmanuel.
But the board, on two occasions, has missed, has blown the opportunity to ask that something proper be done for the town, something better than the board approved. And tonight was a very big disappointment to me, because, not because it was plan that I drew, is because the board did not act on what should have been the proper decision. The plan that was approved, or is being approved, is horrible. It does nothing for the town.
Emmanuel, I appreciate your opinion. We disagree, it's a subjective issue, and I don't like being scolded, because I don't agree with your opinion. I'm entitled to my opinion.
I was asking you to be more polite and not be snickering with Mark when I was trying to make the point, that's all.
If you took it that way, I apologize.
Accepted, and in return, so let's just, let me please just express to you, that before us tonight was an opportunity to set new standards, and we blew it.
Well, to, just, not to deviate from this, Emmanuel, but my point being, before that, before your input on that, was, I think this board has to be more selective in how we spend our time. This FEMA thing is, again, is something that shouldn't even be on our agenda right now. This folder keeps getting stuffed with things that all of us are hearing about the first time, and it just sucks hours away from the work that we should be doing.
So, to that end, this is way more than we can interpret.
Well, it doesn't even belong in our folder, because some.
Unfortunately, the, in the hierarchy of things, this is ours to present.
How does this belong to us, without any representation from the building department on how they're going to approve plans?
No. I was going to say, the first time this was done, we were told, you know, things are going to be more accurate, they got better information, more data, and, you know, do this, and everybody's rates will be fair. And then we approved it, and within months, FEMA came out with a whole new revised map, and had a second public hearing, once they'd been approved all the way around, and it was quite a different ten, yeah, atmosphere.
So, can I?
You saw the true colors, it was nothing but a fundraiser.
Can I ask a question here?
Jack up FEMA rates, get more people paying for flood insurance.
So, George.
To kind of short, you know, yeah, we'll move forward with this, but if we don't get any information from FEMA to explain this prior to town meeting.
I think we need to understand, at a very high level, the ramifications of this. And I have a couple of questions. One is, where does it say this has to go to the town meeting by the planning board?
I can't quote that to you right now.
I question that.
Probably because it's part of the zoning bylaw.
I think you're right.
Is, are floods, are flood zones in the zoning bylaw?
Yep.
And this constitutes a change to the zoning bylaws?
Because it specifies, I can verify it, but I think it specifies certain dates, and if the dates are not up to speed with what's in there, then it could be.
No, I don't think.
Section, do you think it is?
I don't know, I gotta look.
If it's not accepted prior to July 22, 2020, as your community is required, your community is required as a condition of continued eligibility in the national flood insurance program.
It's all under section 420, it talks about flood zones and so forth.
If this is simply taking all the map changes they've made in the past few years, and inserting them onto the map, making, basically making corrections to the old maps?
Yeah.
I don't think anybody has a problem.
I think they're already using the new maps.
They haven't submitted the maps.
Downstairs, no inspection services. I believe we do look online and see that, you're supposed to be able to see the new flood insurance maps.
But new, these aren't accepted yet, so they must be the previous new ones.
So, what I'm reading in here, in here, though, Charlie, is that it just says, we will comply with.
I know, well, you asked a question, I'm only suggesting, because it is in the zoning bylaw, that it might have to be submitted through the planning board.
But what I'm saying is, a matter like this should be presented by some paid administrator in that building across the way, the parking lot, to us to make a decision on. We're five individuals making a decision on a community of 23,000 here, to a federal agency, that's not what this board is designed to do.
Well, they give you something to say, you're going to put the. Well, they, they give you something to say you're gonna put this forward, but, oh, by the way, you can't fail it. You have to do it. Well, you have to accept that it'll affect your eligibility.
Could be negative consequences by the federal government.
That's what they said last time. Forget it. The towns that didn't adopt it gotta accommodate it.
And I believe Ken probably put it in the packet. He would be probably the best to explain it. And he's not here, unfortunately, for whatever reason.
He's ill.
He's, he's sick.
You know, these are individual property listings, which tells me somebody went in for a elevation certificate or some sort of determination.
That doesn't require a town meeting vote to do that.
For that, maybe to incorporate these changes into the previous map.
Why don't we table this till Ken comes back? Because all we're doing is assuming now.
Well, say, February 3.
Well, just, just like the zone, just like the signs, though, we'll submit it and withdraw it.
Well, I would say, you have to submit it and then you can either yea or nay on town meeting floor.
Yeah.
Say, this stuff is not enough information to provide it, shoot it down.
Are you familiar with the NFIP regulations?
That's the National Flood Insurance Program. Right.
Because I'm reading this, I'm trying to read it very carefully. Prior to July of this year, we are required as a continue, as a condition of continued eligibility to adopt or show evidence of adoption of flood plane management regulations that meet the standards of paragraph such and such in the NFIP.
If you don't have that adopted, then you probably are not eligible for the National Flood Insurance.
Right. My point is, is saying that we need to show that we adopt to their, we evidence of adoption of flood plane management regulations. Don't say anything about maps.
Well, it's all a part of it. I would suggest that you talk with the building inspector. Get him in here and let him explain what this is all about.
Agreed, but I'm trying to make a point here in that it's not asking us to approve the maps. It's telling, it's, it's asking us to show that we comply with the NFIP regulations.
We don't know.
You can't verify that.
Oh, sure we can. You can ask a building inspector.
Well, Ken, Ken probably has information on this, too, so I'd...
I would suggest you talk with the building inspector because he has to administer that regulation.
Sure.
He would go to class and, and understand that. Ken may have the information, but I would almost guarantee that the building inspector would have a lot more.
Yeah. I agree.
I think he's the proper man to just, maybe he can look at this and say, "Look, this is just a formality. We have to do it every so many years." Put it in there and pass it. It may be as simple as that.
I think it is. So, we've had...
I'd rather hear that from him than try and sit here for the last half hour and listen to conjecture. Doesn't make any sense.
So, George, you need a motion to, uh,
Hey, George?
Continue this. We get some information and we can move forward?
Because the clock is moving.
I think you wanted to, a motion to submit it, right?
Right.
Correct.
We can always pull it if we don't get the information we're looking for.
Well, I think it's gonna get there anyway.
Is he my point?
The difference is, you know, information will help if you can believe it.
Evidence of adoption of flood plane management regulations.
So, just get a letter from the building department saying he complies with it?
To Charlie's point, I think that may be all we need to do.
Well, not just a letter. Why don't you, why don't you talk to Russell? We know what he's talking about. We're still in the document.
But the punctual about it is, you could agree to conform to the regulation, but if you don't know the regulation front to back, you don't know what you're agreeing to.
Right.
You could be rendering somebody's property unbuildable.
On a federal level and ask us if we're complying with the federal standard. There's a town administrator and 50 layers below him over there who should be advising us.
Just to weigh through their acronyms of science.
Exactly why I show up at 7 o'clock, to try to avoid these things.
Whoever submits your, you know, to the planning board to request the putting, putting on the town warrant, ought to be here, whether it's that one, the sign law one.
I said that a year and a half ago.
Ken, Ken had every intention of being here tonight.
I know, so he could be here.
So, did you make a motion to submit it?
Yeah.
And was there a second?
Second. I've got a bunch of seconds.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
By the way, gentlemen, I will not be here February 9th or 23rd. They see that.
Not vacation, huh?
It's the 10th.
You, you anybody to go with you, carry your bags or?
It's the 10th. The night is a Sunday, Emmanuel.